Good morning. We will call the Pennington County Commission meeting for July 5th, 2016, to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection, pledge allegiance led by KJ Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any items on the agenda that they wish removed? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennig is Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 21st, 2016; number six is to acknowledge the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Inglehart Road District, effective for the tax year 2016 and after, as submitted by the auditor; number seven is to acknowledge the withdrawal of the reconvenance request for ZCC, Inc., as submitted by the Treasurer; number eight is to approve the warrant of appointment for Mr. Tom Wilsley for a two-year term to the Office of Highway Superintendent, as submitted by myself; and number nine is approval of the chairman's signature on the Rushmore Connector Trail comment letter, as submitted by Weeden Pest.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Number five and number nine.
Number five and nine. Any others? If not, do we have a motion?
With approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of number five and number nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five.
Mr. Chair, for the record, if it's going to be mentioned an item, it should have a, should be complete on page sixteen. It's the agenda item. Anyway, page sixteen, it says a complaint was filed. Commissioner Ferby was given the opportunity to address or refute the claim and chose not to do so. For the record, the date, the opportunity, presented itself, should be in the record. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with that. We certainly can put in the date of the executive session where he was approached about that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to correct the minutes. With an addition, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine.
Number nine, Mr. Chair, I don't know that we want to make a motion in second before we discuss, or should we discuss prior to making a motion?
Any thoughts on, on that suggestion?
Mr. Chair, why is it being taken off the agenda?
Once again, my question was, should we discuss it before or make a motion before?
And, Mr. Chair, my, once again, question was, why is it being taken off the agenda? And that might help us understand.
So apparently, we want to discuss it. At least, one member wants to discuss it. So I'll just, I think it's premature. I think we need more work on the, on the letter that we're sending to the forest supervisor. And part of that prematurity is I don't think we should be speaking for the sheriff. I think the sheriff should have his own comments. But more important to me in District One is the Hill City Ambulance and Fire and Keystone Ambulance and Fire will probably be the most likely responders if this trail goes through. And I think that those boards should have their separate input. We shouldn't be speaking for them, in other words. I also had a question or two for our Natural Resources Director. If I may?
Go ahead.
I know you and I have had the discussion over the years that the county has zero jurisdiction over weeds in the cities, municipalities. Does that extend to the state?
Mr. Chairman, Scott Guffey, Natural Resources Director. No, we, we can do enforcement on the state if, if it comes down to it. And we've had conversations with them in the past and we've, we've tried to improve their their noxious weed management along the trail. And matter of fact, just this morning, I got another complaint on it, so.
A follow-up, Mr. Chair. Have you notified the state of, of any places where there's noxious weeds on Mickelson Trail?
Not this year, I haven't. But in the past, we've, we've definitely had issues with them.
And what kind of response have you yet received?
They get around to it. It's not, not like they're Johnny-on-the-spot usually, so it's, it's a work in progress. That's why, that's why I raised the concern initially on this, on this proposed connector was, was the noxious weed issues. And then walk, working through it, I did get response from Hill City Fire Chief, our fire coordinator, and then also the Sheriff's Department. And I, and I did raise that, that question if they could also send in a separate comments letter. There is-
Before we leave the weeds, do you treat the state the same way as you treat individual landowners?
Yes.
Okay, now, now back to the ambulance, and I didn't hear you say ambulance.
No, and I don't know if Denny contacted ambulance or not. I kind of left it to fire coordinator and the Sheriff's Department, but I don't know if the ambulance department was contacted. I personally didn't, but we sure can follow up with them.
Well, Mr. Sheriff, I think that they're independent, well, they, they're not independent boards, but they are boards that are authorized by law, the Fire Board and the Ambulance Board for both communities in my district, and I think they ought to have their own input. It shouldn't be part of ours. But this, this document needs work. Thank you.
Someone perhaps can correct me, but I, I have the impression that any these comments were open from anyone, invited from anyone, and I doubt very much that the intent of the commission was to preclude anyone any other entity from having their own thoughts and comments.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, I mean, these were just concerns we raised. I mean, if they want to add or expand on any of those points that we had, I mean, they're more than, more than welcome to.
Morning. Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. We did submit comments electronically online, and we support the connector trail and said that we would provide search and rescue and law enforcement response to the connector trail like we do the rest of the Mickelson Trail that runs through Pennington County, so we're fine with it.
Mr. Chair, if all the sheriffs are up here, may I inquire further?
Go ahead.
How much time do you spend on Mickelson Trail?
I don't have the numbers with me. We do some routine UTV patrol on the trail and then respond to calls for service as needed, but I don't have that data with me.
And no bicycle patrol at this point, or?
No, sir.
So your patrol is motorized?
That's correct.
Thank you, and
Anything further?
I certainly can't, at this point, support the trail or not support the trail. So I think our language, at least I can't vote for it with language, says that, well, we support the concept of the trail. I need more information and-
Go ahead.
Good morning. Denny Gordon, Pennington County Fire Minister. Just for clarification, I did ask the Mr. Craig Comer, Hill City Fire Chief, who is also on the Hill City ambulance, and asked him to forward those questions or that information to the Hill City ambulance. So they were aware of it. They were, they knew about it. Mr. Comer responded back and told me that basically the ambulance concerns are the same as the fire department concerns, because they both respond to any incidents out there, so. So they were aware.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might, Mr. Comer's not chief of the fire, he's maybe on the Fire Board, but he's not the Fire Board, and the Fire Board and Ambulance Board are in charge. They're the ones that we pay taxes to, we, in that, in that district.
Mr. Comer is the Hill City Fire Chief.
But he's not the board.
Okay, anything further?
Yes, if anybody wants to read, there's a thirteen-page comment that Mr. Guffey has put forward. And from seeing and visiting and going with Mr. Guffey on different projects, very thorough. And I think, at this point, I have no problem supporting him, because anything he's ever done has been over and above, so I'm pretty sure if you read the thirteen-page comments that he has done, it's very thorough. So thank you, Mr. Guffey.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is John Henderson. I'm here representing the Cross Sabres Partnership and the Henderson family. I think probably, I mean no disrespect to the Sheriff's Office or the firefighters or whatever, but the information is absolutely incorrect. The weeds are not maintained. There is no, on the Mickelson Trail, there is no policing, there is no security. I have multiple, multiple pictures of violations on the Mickelson Trail. Now, I know the count, this is a, I don't know what the, I don't know what the county's role in this trail would be. But I can tell you that there, there is no law enforcement on the Mickelson Trail. If this new connector trail is like the Mickelson Trail, you're going to be invaded by weeds, ATVs that are on a non-motorized trail. And I, I don't understand, if anybody wants to see it, they can go. I could show it to them. And I mean no disrespect to them, but that is rugged, steep terrain. And any weed control is not-
Are you talking Mickelson, or are you, are you talking steep-terrain Mickelson or the connector?
No, the Mickelson Trail is very flat. It's a railroad grade.
So we're talking connector now. I just want to keep them straight, okay?
Sure, I'm sorry. My, my, my reference to the Mickelson Trail is that the new connector trail couldn't be expected to be any better or different than the Mickelson Trail, only worse. An emergency response to that, whether it's firefighting, ambulance, sheriff, whatever it is, is only more difficult. Much. You can hop on the Mickelson Trail about anywhere and get there shortly, and actually, the local fire department, Hill City Fire Department, did go down the trail onto our property where someone, there was a, I don't know, there was shooting or whatever, and they did respond to it, which is fine with us. We're fine with that. But this new connector trail is even worse, way worse.
So how many-
And I have, and- Mr. Guffey? Right? I think I complained about the weeds, the noxious weeds, behind the county yard, behind the state yard, and behind the Forest Service yard on the Mickelson Trail. Now, we spray our weeds, and the government doesn't. They are not spraying. The state might send, and I know this isn't a county issue, but the state might send two guys in a pickup with a wand out the window and spray four feet from the trail, but they don't get the whole thing. And then we get, the county will notify us of a violation of our weeds and we spray them. But the county doesn't, and the state doesn't, and the federal government doesn't. Same thing with the bug trees. We cut our bug trees. That area is a tinderbox, and it is horribly overused. And I know that's probably a Forest Service deal. So you got the city, you got the county, you got the state, and you got two agencies in the federal government, the Forest Service and the National Park Service. What a, what a horrible, horrible concept this is from the get-go. What a bureaucracy, bureaucratic mess this is. And the weeds are not in control, and it is not policed. And I don't know if the county's going to accept the financial responsibility of law enforcement and weeds and whatever, the whole thing, until there are some concrete answers, the whole thing is a conceptually idiotic thing, and it is not needed.
Sir, did you go on the paper for comments and you went to these meetings to voice this?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And what were the answers there? They just said, no big deal, or?
We're still in the planning stages and we, you know, there is no answers.
Mr. Guffey, do you have any answers for this gentleman, sir?
Yeah, and I've talked to John before, but I haven't heard any complaints this year is are they, I assume weeds are grown there again, but I haven't heard anything from you directly this year.
The gal from the Forest Service told me she was going to call you to address the situation.
Yeah, she, she called me Friday.
Okay.
So I just got one Friday, so we, I'm following up on that. But, yeah, like I said earlier, that the weed control is a concern, because that was my original concern on this new connector trail, so it's not lost on me that it's, that weeds are a concern, so that was my original issue, but yeah, I mean, I don't know.
From what I've seen, Mr. Guffey, anytime there was a complaint, he's taking care of it, if it's Mr. Guffey and his department. So I'm going to have to disagree with bureaucracy in his case, because I can tell you from seeing his work, when I've had people with me or, or people have called me, they think he's exceptional at what he does because he addresses that, sir.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Thank you, sir.
We have a very good relationship. I'm not criticizing him. I'm just saying that it's not getting done.
That's the state, yes, sir.
Okay, and it's an additional than responsibility. If this trail, this new trail goes through, it's more responsibility to him.
Right.
If it's in Pennington County. And if the Game Fish and Parks doesn't do it, and the, and the National Forest Service doesn't take care of it, then it falls on him, and that means it falls on the county, which is you guys, which is why I'm bringing this up.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm going to tell you one short story, and then I'll, I'll go. Saturday, I was out building fence. I have two dogs that go with me everywhere I go, and for the, for the record, I'm going to plead guilty right now, but the one dog drifted out, neighbor called, the Sheriff's Department, a deputy came out. This is up by, between, between Sylvan Lake and Crazy Horse. I was out building fence. A deputy had to haul that dog all the way from there to the pound on Saturday afternoon to, so I could go, go back in and pick her up. Again, I plead guilty. However, I would like to know how much did it cost the county to have that deputy drive from almost Crazy Horse off of Sylvan Lake Road all the way to haul that dog to the dog pound, and then I went in and picked up. And I'm, again, I plead guilty. But my point is, you have more people, more responsibility, more calls to answer, if the, the county accepts the responsibility for law enforcement, firefighting, everything. That's my point. You're taking in more, you're taking in more responsibility financially, Mr. Guffey, everything, for something that is not needed, and you've already got enough on your plate. So for the county to go ahead and just randomly say, "We accept this at its conception, but we need answers to weeds," there's a lot more to it than that. That's all I'm asking, is that you consider, consider it before you give it a blanket exception, is what I'm asking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything further?
Mr. Chair, I'm in the same position I was on the Page Law or Reynolds Prairie. I don't think that we should be taking a position one way or another. We might point out some concerns, but when I see language, well, we support, and at the end, we appreciate, I don't think those are words that we should be using at this point. Thank you.
And I, I certainly wouldn't have an issue taking out, striking out those, the support and the the other language if it's approved by the rest of the board. I mean, I'm-
What, what kind of a timetable are we on in terms of the open comment period?
They didn't set a strict deadline, like normally they do. They just said within thirty days, I think, but I don't have the document in front of me, but-
Mr. Chair, when I went to the NFAB meeting a couple weeks ago, it was thirty days.
Was it thirty days?
So we're approaching thirty days.
But certainly, they would accept an extension.
So we still would have time by the next meeting?
Has there been any other complaints? Has there been a lot of complaints about this trail?
I haven't heard, I, I talked to John's brother, Patrick, and there was concerns from the same family. Other than that, I personally haven't heard, and I don't know what kind of comments they were getting at the open house or-
And was there a lot of people at the open house?
I, I didn't attend. I didn't have a chance to attend them, so I don't know what the attendance was.
I guess I, I appreciate people's concerns and, and hopefully, we can do stuff about the weeds and the different things, but trails and Mickelson Trails is well-used by thousands of people. And to say we don't need it, or it's, it's not, you know, we're going to shut it down, or shut this down over a complaint, or a few complaints, there's a difference. But I would hope his concerns would move forward and that we could move forward on this trail and and get those complaints through the state. We can't do anything, but I think Mr. Guffey, when he's doing his job and he's saying that this is a positive, then that's his job. He's an environmental engineer. He can't do everybody's stuff the way they want it to all the time, but he can try to make that difference, and I know he will for you, sir.
May I approach again, please? Mr. Chair, may I approach again?
Yes, one more.
Okay, as, as to the comments and only one, one, one complaint and one family that's commenting, I don't know what comments you're talking about. We have dozens and dozens and dozens of people who have sent it in to the, the, the Connector Trail website. Is that, is that the comments that you're referring to, or did I attend the meeting?
Yes, sir, because I was, that's why I was asking, how many complaints, sir?
Well, I don't work for the federal government. I don't know. They were sent to their website that asked for comments.
Did you go, you went to the meeting, and how many people were complaining at that meeting, sir?
Me.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
But there are other people that are objecting, and they're not going to go forward and speak in public. But there are dozens and dozens of complaint, or objections that have been sent to that website. This is not one, and frankly, I'm insulted that you pointed that out.
I didn't say just one. I said if there's just one. I, I didn't know. I asked the question.
There are many, many. So don't downplay it like there's only just one complaining party in this thing. There are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds.
That's not what I said. What I said was, there was one complaint. I asked if there was other complaints. I'm not trying to be mean to you. Trying to be respectful, and you're saying I'm being disrespectful. I don't know. That's why I was asking. So I didn't say it was just you. So just relax. I'm not trying to be mean to you, okay? I'm taking what you're saying in. Mr. Guffey has taken that in. This board has taken what you're saying. We take that seriously. And I didn't mean it if I offended you, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I apologize if I disrespected you.
I apologize, too.
Okay, my point is, my point is that there are many, many objections. I'm sorry, I was still talking to you. There are many, many objections.
Sorry.
There are many objections to it, not just one party. And I don't know where you, the county commission, gets, gets a hold of the comments that went to the National Forest on this project. It is not just one family or one party. There are many.
And sir, I will go through it, and I will, I will call you, if you can give Mr. Guffey or Holly your phone number. I will call you after I go through it with Mr. Guffey, and maybe we can figure out some of those complaints and look at them, and to be fair to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm not offended. I could do that for you.
Okay.
Commissioner, I have a question. Just, have you read those comments? I mean, do you have access to them, or? Because I, what I read in here is, this goes across one private property. What are the rest of the complaints? Who are they from, and why are they complaining?
From the public.
About what?
From taxpayers.
About, they don't, the expense, you mean, or?
Well, there, well, there's one. That would be part of it. The overuse of that, that very fragile area. It goes into the Norbeck Wildlife, and it ends up eventually going into the Black Hills. It's already horribly, and I don't think this is a county issue, but it's already horribly overused by an ATV system.
Yeah, I don't like that idea.
Well, there's, I could, there's erosion. They destroyed one of the ATVs. They rent them at the KOA, and then they go out and they go through this trail system. This new trail, which probably, this is probably not a county issue, but this new trail system would go through that same trail system, and then the ATVs will end up going on this new trail. Again, this is probably not a county issue. This is a, you know, the Forest Service's issue.
Mr. Chair, can we kind of go back to where we started? John, I, I totally get this. I spent a lot of time with your mom last night on the phone. And we have to express our concerns, and that's what this letter does. It is just saying we need to understand what you're doing about these issues, and they need to be addressed. The comments, if I am correct, were in the comment period, and at the end, those comments will be made public, but right now, they are not. So getting access to comments right now might be a little difficult. We'll have to wait until the comment period ends, and then they are available to us, and we can look at them. But if we don't send this in, then we are not getting our comments in there. If, if that's your purpose is to stop this today, then we don't get our comments in. And I think it's important, what we want to say here about safety and emergency response and weed control. Those sort of things are really important for the county, so the county needs to move forward with this. I don't have a problem with the concerns of George. If, you know, we can just say that we have concerns over this project and we want some answers. I'm fine with that. But we can't, we really should not hold it back, because if two weeks ago at a NFAB meeting, there was thirty days, and we were already in the thirty days, we need to get this in instead of waiting till the next meeting.
I understand, and I, I understand your position, you know, all of your positions. My, my only hope, and I think, you know, the, the county is, is not a big entity in this, as much as the federal government.
Correct.
Okay, but my position is, is that I don't want the county to approve its conception until they get the answers to these questions. So just don't say, "We, we agree with or approve this conception."
I think you won. We're all for it.
Then I'll let it, I'll just stop yapping there. I should have saved the time on the dog story. Thank you.
And Denny just gave me the scoping letter, and it, it does say, "Within thirty days of June 6th," so we're, we're right against that deadline. So if you guys wanted to make some edits on that letter today, I can make the adjustments, get it to Holly, and get those submitted in time if, if that would work.
So Mr. Guffey, is John's concerns all addressed? Because what I've seen, they have been addressed in this letter.
Right.
That's the bottom line, is that the citizen gets, a constituent gets his concerns, and and I know you good enough, you are going to address those already, so that's, so I'm not ignoring you, sir. And sorry, I, I believe what you're saying, and I appreciate that. How about that? But, Mr. Guffey, we'll bring that forward, and again, if you'd like me to call you with the comments, I could do that, too. It doesn't, it'll only take me a few minutes, so I appreciate that, sir.
But I think if, on that second paragraph, if we strike why we support the concept of the trail, just strike that whole thing out, and then just put there some concerns, and then what was the other one, George?
The last paragraph.
We appreciate. Just reword that.
Well, just take that out.
Or just take that first sentence out.
Just take the first sentence out, and, and, Mr. Chair, if I might, I fortunately, unfortunately, I traveled past a mile or two of Mickelson Trail, and and it's almost a rarity to see anybody on it, so I, I guess that's not a scientific observation, but at least it's a personal observation. So if there's thousands of people on Mickelson Trail, they're not on the park that I drive next to. So for the record, it's a rarity to see people on that trail. At least a portion that I observe. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've covered most of everything.
So, Mr. Chair, you- Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve your signature on a revised letter submitted by Mr. Guffey, and that revision would include removing the phrase "while we support the concept of the trail" from that sentence in the second paragraph. And on the last page, on the last paragraph, removing the sentence, "We appreciate the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks proposal to increase recreational trail opportunities in the Black Hills."
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing then, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, John. Well, we're at item ten, and Judge Feifley is in the hot seat, and I'm surprised you didn't get in on the last debate.
Well, my expectation was, budget discussion was noxious enough without talking about weeds as well. So, first, let me thank you for accommodating me sort of out of your normal budgetary schedule. State Bar Convention was in Sioux Falls at the time you had those, I had some organizations and committees that I chair that I needed to be present at as part of those meetings, so I thank you for taking me sort of out of the normal order. As a background, a year ago, when I started this process, we started sort of working on a more realistic expectation of our projections for you in terms of your budget for the three items that are presented to you. One is the court-appointed attorney's fees, and just for clarification, I know that you do yeoman's work with your public defender's office, with your contract with Dakota Plains Legal Services, but based upon sort of two factors, one of which are conflict questions or multiple-party cases, the other of which are withdrawals by both of those entities because they simply have too many cases. They're under some guidelines that they operate under in terms of number of cases that each attorney in those offices can handle and take. We do still have a fairly significant number of court-appointed attorneys that operate, and that's the one budgetary item that's in the court-appointed attorney's budget. The other item is, we have separated out the abuse and neglect cases. Those are always multiple-party requirements for counsel, including counsel for the children, which is mandated by South Dakota state law. And so, that's the other budgetary item. And then the administrative item is for jury fees, expert witness fees, those sorts of things that require us to pay on the day-to-day function for the cases that our state's attorney's office brings to our courtrooms. We've done a couple of different things this year, just sort of to outline why the budget request is where it's at, one of which is, and I'm sure you've heard this from your other discussions with the Office of the Sheriff, with your public defender's office, and with your state's attorney's office, is the volume has just increased exponentially, and the court system is, I'll call it, the beneficiary of that increase. We've seen a large increase in the number of felony cases that have been filed over the last number of years. I think our projections indicate we're going to be somewhere between sixty-five hundred and sixty-eight hundred total felony cases for the calendar year 2016. And as a result, again, we sort of see that domino effect as it relates to how many cases need to have court-appointed counsel, and what that costs the county as part of that process. The other thing that we've tried to do this year, and why the numbers seem a little higher, is that regularly, we've come back in a supplemental budget process, and we want to try to avoid that for you with the best information that we have as of today, and the most realistic expectations for your consideration for the budgetary process. So, what we've done is sort of try to manage that number, give an understanding of what the increase will be over the course of the next year, as we see this proliferation of, frankly, drug cases in our county, and the costs that that will impact with us in terms of your budget process, which we try to manage. Thus, where we're at with the numbers. About a year ago, we had some discussion about trying to better manage the numbers for you in terms of expectations, what you can see from year to year, and perhaps reduce those numbers in terms of availability of appointment of court-appointed counsel. And I made the fatal mistake of talking to the chief justice about that issue, which resulted in me being the co-chair of a committee that he has appointed that is working on that issue. I'll let you know, we're still continuing our work on that process. What the expectation is, is that we'll have a more formalized approach to use throughout the UJS statewide for purposes of qualification for and understanding of who gets court-appointed counsel. So, hopefully, that should happen early part of 2017. Realistically, the expectation for that committee expanded a little bit over the course of our first half dozen meetings, and so it's a little longer process than we anticipated. But that is still ongoing. We are mindful of trying to be as cost-effective as we can for your budget. You know, these are items that you're required to pay. Whatever kind of comes across the plate needs to happen, and do our best to try to make sure that we project those for you in the most accurate way that we possibly can, and to manage those costs as best we can for you. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions about sort of what our process was and where we went for the coming year.
Any questions for Judge Feifley?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, what I hear you saying is very encouraging. You're working on some kind of standardized format for judges across the state for appointing court-appointed attorneys.
The idea, Commissioner Ferby, is to have a little bit better expectation as to who qualifies, what those qualification criteria are, and to help both judges and counties manage their expectation and understanding of what that means.
And currently, do we hear locally, or the Seventh Circuit, have any kind of standards for?
Well, there is a court-appointed counsel application process that individuals have to go through. Quite honestly, it tends to be a judicial discretion issue. Let me give you an example. The large bulk of the applications indicate no assets and no income. Those are pretty easy for us to understand and appoint counsel on, and that's, anecdotally, that's about ninety percent of what we receive. It's the other ten percent that tend to be a little problematic. We try to manage those based upon what the charge is. If someone has some income and some assets, and they're charged with a DUI one, for example, that's a different review process for the judge than if they're charged with murder one, because a significant amount of assets may not be enough to manage that case for that individual. And so, that's, it tends to be a process that the judges undergo regularly, but with some real thought to it. But that's the kind of thing that we talk about in terms of how we manage that. Hopefully, we'll develop a new form that will allow further information for the judges as part of this indigent defense committee that the chief justice has appointed, to allow the judges more information and a more balanced approach in how we approve counsel.
Mr. Feifley, what is the total of your budget this year? Because you have one fifty-seven, seven seventy-two, fifty, and four hundred?
It's one million, four twenty is the total.
Okay, and maybe a question for KJ. Is the three sixty-two-nine from the alcohol beverage, is that what we got from the state, or is that a different fund? Because you have zero-one-five-five and zero-three-three-five alcohol beverage fund distribution.
Yeah, the question is, why is that in this budget?
Yeah.
Oh, as an offset?
Yeah.
Well, if you think about the reasons why we are getting that money, I'm assuming, first of all, I'm assuming Julie had checked with DLA on that, because they kind of give us recommendations, unless it's what we call a general shared revenue. So, I'm guessing because we're getting the money back due to the number of cases in courts is why the revenue is applied.
Doesn't matter, I guess.
The same, I know we, right now, we get the, I mean, for years, we've gotten the money back from the state on the court-appointed attorney in A and N cases, so.
Ms. KJ, did we take that total out of the one million, four twenty, or did we, how did you?
No, that's, you don't reduce the budget by that. You just reduce the levied portion by that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, appreciate your efforts, Judge, and I wish you the best of come up with some kind of standardized system.
Thank you.
And I have a question. When do you think that'll happen, Judge?
I'm hopeful, Commissioner, that we have some information to the Supreme Court by the end of this year. They have a rules hearing committee process that happens in the early part of seventeen, and hopefully, they'll take the rules that we develop and approve them.
Because with your increase in the court-appointed attorney fees of seventy thousand dollars, you're not expecting it next year, I guess?
I think it's unlikely next year. I know the wheels of justice move slow. I certainly don't want to be on record as either commenting on that or criticizing the Supreme Court's rule review process.
That's always a bad thing.
Let me make one comment, just so there's no surprises. As you well know, this has been a difficult year for Pennington County in terms of the number of deaths that the county has seen through violence. Pending right now are a number of different cases in our court system that are a result of that conduct. How those cases are processed in terms of what the charge is and what the requested punishment is, is driven by the Office of the State's Attorney. We respond to that, but I will let you know that in the event that one or more of those, there is a request, that it be a capital case, capital punishment case, the numbers that we're talking about will skew dramatically, because those are incredibly expensive to any county that's facing them, both in terms of the prosecution and in terms of how court-appointed counsel need to respond, how many court-appointed counsel we need to have, appointment of expert witnesses, et cetera. So, I don't have that information today, but I want you to know that there's a possibility that this number gets skewed dramatically, and we just have to sort of face that as it comes out. But I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any surprises if that happened.
Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, it's currently one point four-two million. That's what you're asking?
Correct.
Taxpayers of Pennington County.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, that's what, that's what, you're asking the taxpayers of Pennington County to pay for their required constitutional, yeah. This is, this really isn't our budget, Commissioner. It's a, it's a pass-through that we try to manage for you to the best way that we possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Ferby.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is item ten point two, treasurer.
Your ten point two, Janet, today.
Good morning, Janet Sailor, county treasurer. You will note in your packet that there was change in the budget, the original budget that was submitted, that I submitted last Thursday to, or Wednesday to Holly, to put in this packet, and it's a three thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollar change due to some unforeseen circumstances. I don't think I need to stand up here and tell the commission how many phone calls we take, how many people we see every day. The county commissioners have already heard that before, and you know what my office does. So, I am requesting, in this budget, that I be allowed to hire one more full-time employee. I have been working with Mr. Strout from HR, and we have went through a lot of things and a lot of circumstances within my office, and it has been determined, after the studies and the restructuring that we are going to do in my office, that I need one more employee. So, I'd stand for any questions that the commissioners have.
Any questions for Janet?
I have one.
Okay.
Hostage, what happened there?
Hostage went down because we're not sending out plates next year, Ron. It's not a plate year.
But then your revenue went down the same or more?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Are we voting on FTA today, or are we just going to wait till all the FTEs come in and then put them all together?
I think we should.
That's what we've been doing.
Whatever.
Okay, so, we're just listening to Janet's budget today.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, next item is item eleven. This is the interview and appointment of planning commission members. And for your information, we have six applicants, and the list that we have in our packet is in alphabetical order. How do you wish to, first, I will suggest, from my point of view, it would be perhaps more appropriate if only the applicant that was being interviewed was in this room, and the other remaining applicants would be in the conference room waiting their turn, so that each person is here on the same foundation. I mean, they're not listening to five other people and then coming up with their answer at the end.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Next item that I would pose to the commission is how you want each candidate to present themselves to you. Certainly, we could have questions for each one, depending on something they may say, but do you want to just kind of let it flow on a free-form basis, or do you want to have set questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, just from the candidate, like to hear some of their background, why they have the interest, that sort of thing, and then we follow it with our own questions.
In a spontaneous manner is what you're asking, right?
Yeah.
No set standard for the six, just spontaneously from us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything else that we need to address before we move into the interviews? If not, Ali, do you want to guide folks? And we will go ahead and go alphabetical, if that's all right with the commission.
Sure.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Kyle Freisinger, resident of sixty-six twelve Cock Hill Lane, Rapid City. Been a nineteen or twenty-year resident of Pennington County. I have over twenty-four years' experience primarily in construction, primarily operations, which also includes permits, in some cases enforcement, and consultants. My relevant experience, I've been involved with various permits during my tenure of employment in three different states, Montana, Wyoming, and South Dakota. And I'm also very experienced with the Pennington County Planning and Zoning. Why should I be picked or nominated for Planning and Zoning Commission? I'm not a teacher, engineer, or store owner. I'm a construction professional, and I help manage and enforce state, city, and county permits for all my operations. I've applied for permits, and I also enforce, like I said, the regulations on those permits. I'm a volunteer. I've been with the Boy Scouts of America for ten years, also a volunteer firefighter for Rapid Valley for five years. Things that I think are relevant with planning and zoning, you know, I travel throughout the county with my current position. I see development. I want to be involved with any new development and make sure it's done in an orderly and organized manner. Another thing I'd like to bring up is, I realize that Pennington County zoning ordinance, this document here, basically our rulebook, should also be a live document with constant review and committee work on relevant subjects, much like's going on today. With that, a little bit about myself, like I said, a resident of Pennington County, married, two adult children, and just want to be involved, and think I have a lot... to be involved and think I have a lot to offer to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have one. Are you still employed by Kroll Ready Mix?
I am employed by Kroll Ready Mix, yes.
You do realize we have a ten million dollar lawsuit going with them?
Yes, I do.
Conflict of interest.
Any other questions?
Well, despite the conflict of interest, I, it takes a lot of time, Kyle. Your job is pretty intense, too, the time commitment. I mean, several hours a week.
No, I understand. I mean, I, I did my research on planning and zoning meetings. I know the meetings are anywhere between three to six hours, and obviously probably the equivalent to be prepared for a meeting. So I, you know, like I said, I'm very familiar with the ordinances, with the permits that are necessary, with the work to be done.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you, you mentioned Rapid Valley Fire Department. That means you're in Rapid, live in Rapid Valley?
I, yeah, I resided in Rapid Valley from ninety-seven through two thousand seven, roughly ten years. So I was a member of the volunteer fire department for five years.
So you're not now?
No, I moved out of the district. So I'm in the city right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Will he go back in the conference room and then somebody else come out? How are we going? Do they switch places, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Well, as long as he doesn't ask to talk again, he can do anything he wants.
Okay, good.
And no texting. Okay, we're ready for Michael Gulliver.
Mr. Chair, if, if he were texting, would, would you know that? I wouldn't.
We'll watch his hand.
I, I've heard somebody use the word.
Oh, okay. As long as it's not that clear, I, I don't have a clue.
So, do you want me to go get?
Well, I'm not sure what our communication is here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, PJ.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Next one, Hall.
Do you want Kyle to go back in the other rooms?
No, he, as long as, we won't let him talk.
Okay, I'll give him.
She must have the TV turned off in there.
I don't know who he is. Kyle was talking to the guy with the glasses on. Maybe.
Hello.
Good morning.
Introduce yourself and tell us what you want us to hear.
Well, thank you. Well, thanks for seeing me today. My name's Mike Gulliver. I grew up in Spearfish, South Dakota, attended the School of Mines, graduated there in nineteen eighty-six with a degree in mining engineering. Since that time, I've spent my career in a number of different places and a number of different types of mines, open Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, and California. Had an opportunity to move back to this area. I'd previously spent about sixteen years down in Colorado. Had a chance to move back to this area. My folks are getting a little bit older now, so we moved back to take care of them. So moved back here. I've got a number, a bunch of different types of experience, I guess. You know, I started off in operations. I've done operations and some permitting, gone in through the sales, sales side, and actually, I'm doing a lot of mine planning right now. So, but I've also been involved with the National Stone, Sand, and Gravel Association. We, down in our Colorado operation, we, we actually pulverized minerals down there to use for a bunch of different things, and I got involved with that. Served on the Board of Directors for the NSSGA for five years, and then on the, on the Pulverized Minerals Division for three years. So I guess my interest is just adding that experience to the, the Planning Commission. You know, it seems to me like there's a lot of different things that are going on out there, and I think I have a lot to, to bring that I could help out with, whether, whether it's connections I have, or people that I know, or experiences that I've had within the industry. So I'm married, got three kids, coming up on my thirtieth anniversary now, so that's coming up real soon. My son just graduated from the School of Mines, daughter just graduated from CSU, and I got one daughter at Black Hill State, so hoping to make this our home for a number of years. So anyway, open for any questions you might have, or?
Okay, any questions for Michael?
Where do you work today, Michael?
I work for Peat Lane and Sons.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I noticed on your submission that you, you say you're interested in development and enforcement of ordinances that regulate land use in this area. What do you consider this area?
I guess for this purpose, Pennington County and the Black Hills.
Realizing that, if I might follow up, Mr. Chair, realizing that, what, roughly two-thirds of the land area of Pennington County is not in the Black Hills?
I guess that's true, but you really, a mining operation is a mining operation, whether it's in the Black Hills or where there's a sand and gravel operation out in the prairie somewhere, there's still a lot of things that you can, you can draw some parallels between all of those.
Mr. Chair, if I might, though, you would, you would entertain, or you would be amenable to the notion of having a different set of rules for east of Rapid versus west of Rapid?
I would think each, each individual property would probably be on its, on its own merits, I would believe, you know? Depends on, you know, where the, what type of deposit it is, where it is, you know? So if it's, if it's different in the east, I guess you could say that's different in the east than the west, but I think each operation should be evaluated on its own merits.
Any other questions?
One more time on, in this area, would, would you consider the Black Hills being an area?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for Patrick S. Jones.
Michael, you can stay here if you want.
Oh, that's right. He was out of the room when we said that.
We're making you run all over.
Good morning.
You're.
And Pat, please.
You're free to tell us what you want us to hear.
Okay, well, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to apply for this. My name is Pat Jones. I'm a lifetime, almost resident of Rapid City, Pennington County area, born and raised here, been gone the last nine or ten years, and have moved back home. Thrilled to be back home and anxious to take my experience, my training, and put it to work for the citizens in this area. I have a history of public service. I was on the City Commission in Lead for ten years. Excuse me. Started on the Parking Authority there. And if you've ever been to Lead, dealing with parking issues in Lead is a, was a bit of a baptism by fire in the world of public service. Then went on to the City Council there for ten years. Been a professional educator for most of my career, thirty years. Just returned back home to Rapid City. My wife and I just moved back. My wife's mother-in-law, her health is declining, and we have moved home to have her move in with us, and we're taking care of her. And so I'm anxious to get back involved in things in the part of the country that I love to call home. My training for this, like I said, would be my years in public service on the City Council and the Parking Authority in Lead. I have a bachelor's degree in music education from Black Hill State University. My master's degree is in education and administration from South Dakota State University, and my doctorate degree is in administration and education from the University of South Dakota. I've worked with many, many boards, councils, groups, organizations over the years, small and large, at the city, county, state, and federal level. Very much enjoy and respect the process, have a good depth of knowledge in policy writing, the application of rules and regulations to situations. And something unique that I believe I bring to this as well, I was a sports official for thirty-three years, football, basketball, baseball, softball, et cetera, until my knees said, "You're done officiating sports." What that has given me is a, a very unique perspective in taking a dry, static piece of paper that has rules and applying it to life situations. Whether it's a policy book or a football rules book, it's up to the people, it's up to someone throughout the process to take those and apply them to both simple situations and both challenging situations. I was successful in that realm and look forward to continuing to apply those skills and talents to this Planning and Zoning Board. I am appreciative of the opportunity to be here and very much hope that I'm selected. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Pat?
So where do you work now, Pat?
Right now, I am employed at McKee Ford as a sales consultant.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, so I, I just want to do sort of a follow-up with what, it can be a lot of time commitment, Pat. Would that be okay?
Yes, that would be fine. I've, I've already talked to my employer about this, about, you know, the meetings and the outside work that goes with it, and they are fine with that. They're very supportive of my involvement in the community, and I, I don't see any problem there at all.
Okay, great.
You mentioned ten years on the Lead City Council?
Yes, sir.
You got quite familiar with the Planning and Zoning Ordinance?
Yes, we worked with Planning and Zoning every meeting, pretty much, when they would bring forward ordinances, recommendations. People would come in for variances to driveways, or roof projects, or businesses, sidewalks, setbacks, anything like that. That started with planning and zoning. Planning and zoning would come to the full board for their, with their recommendation, and then we would act with them. I attended many of the planning and zoning meetings just to learn the process and understand it as a new commissioner, so I could see how that process exactly worked. So I believe I, I am well-prepared and versed to, to respect that process and help it proceed along at an appropriate pace.
Thank you. And you didn't have very many twenty-five-foot setbacks in Lead, probably, huh?
Not many.
Thank you. A lot of variances.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Pat? If not, thank you, Pat. And you're free to stay and listen to the others. Okay, we're ready for Weldon Travis Lassiter.
Did you say to stay and listen?
You're welcome to stay, yeah.
Thanks for having me.
You tell us anything you want us to hear.
Tell you anything I want you to hear, vote for me. I'm Travis Lassiter. I was born and raised in Texas, came up here with the Air Force, just retired out of the Air Force about a year and a half ago, almost a year and a half ago, and served my country for twenty-one years, got out because of medical issues, and now looking to continue to serve throughout the community since I did it for twenty-one years. We've got a small farm ranch in New Underwood, just east of New Underwood. Me and my wife and four kids run it, and we do a pretty good job trying to keep all the craziness in line. That's about it. There's, there's not much to me. I'm pretty simple.
So, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Travis, then, how, what are, what is your experience in the planning and zoning area, then?
Specifically with planning and zoning, I've never done anything specific with that. However, being in the military, I've learned how to do and adapt to multiple jobs. I kind of gave you an overview of what I've done in the military, and it's one of those things that the military puts you in a job, you, you learn to do it, and then you do it well. If I didn't learn to do it well, I wouldn't have been promoted and, and been decorated the way I wa, I was. But this is something that I would like to be a part of. It deals with, you know, the rural community for the most part, at least where, you know, I know I'm in Pennington County out in New Underwood, and it may not directly impact me right now, but whenever you're dealing with permits, and when you're dealing with zoning ordinances, or zoning, and things of that nature, I think it's something that I would really like to get my hands involved with. I believe in researching everything that I do, so it's not something I'm going to go in there and be haphazardly about. And just primarily the simple fact that, you know, communities have to plan to expand because we're a population growing. We're not a population that's not growing. So if we don't plan to grow, then, you know, we're going to have some issues, and I would like to be a part of that process. My research, I think, will come in handy with that.
So you're retired?
Retired, yes. Yes, so I have time on my hands to do such. Even though I've got four kids at home, yes, I do have some, some time on my hands to do.
Thank you, Travis.
Any other questions for Travis? Straightforward, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of them.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for Rich Marsh. I don't know how we're communicating, but here he comes. Good morning. You're free to tell us what you want us to hear.
Okay, well, first off, my name is Rich Marsh. I appreciate the opportunity this morning to, to talk with you guys about being on the Planning Commission. In my, you know, quick history about myself, I was born and raised in Spearfish, so I've been around the Black Hills, went to school here at the School of Mines. After that, I, I did a short stint for, I worked for the Department of Transportation in Pier and in Rapid City, both. Following that, I, I became a consultant engineer, and I, I've worked on various projects. I've, I've been in front of commissions and, and had to submit things to the city and, and to the Pennington County, both on projects that, that I was designing and doing and working on in the past. You know, and, and so recently, I, I made kind of a career change there and, and kind of got out of it a little bit, and, and I, I've been on various homeowners' boards and those types of things, and, and I was looking at the opportunities on the Planning Commission, knowing that, you know, my background with, with, you know, municipal and rural infrastructure projects, those types of things, I, I thought I could bring my talents to the Planning Commission and, and apply those, you know, to help and give recommendations to the board, so. With that, I welcome any questions that you guys have, and again, I appreciate the opportunity.
Any questions for Rich?
So which, Rich, what boards have you been on? You said you've been on numerous boards?
I've been on, like, my homeowners' board, the Countryside South Homeowners' Board. I'm on another one at a, at a place I have down at a lake, and I was the president of the, the Local Engineering Society Board and, and those types of things.
Rich, you work at Peat Lane?
I do.
Okay, I saw that on your, on your website, so, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
It's, it takes some time.
Sure.
How, how is that going to work into your schedule?
You know, that's a good question. I took a look at some of the, the timeframes of the meetings and, and some of those things I, I did, and it, we'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. I, I mean, I, I have the time available on, on the Mondays that are needed. One of the questions that, that I would have is, you know, the, the timeframes beyond that, and how, how intensive those timeframes would be. But I certainly have time for, for the meetings and to, to study the material. I've taken a look at some of the agendas. The, the language, the, you know, the ordinances, those types of things, I'm very familiar with. So being able to research those and understand what's happening with the commission at, at any given time, and, and understanding the associated issues with those, I feel I can get through fairly quickly. So understanding the, the docket in front of me is not going to be a time issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might, would you recommend a, a limit on the, on the board of how many civil engineers or CE's?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Say, would you recommend a, a limit, an upper limit on number of civil engineers on the board?
That's a pretty inappropriate comment.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rich?
Does he want me to respond to that? No.
You're good, Mike.
It's not worth it.
Any other questions for Rich?
I could ask it a different way. Would you be concerned if all six appointed members were civil engineers?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Rich, you're free to sit in the audience while we do our last interview, and then we'll do our voting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for Tina Malali. While we're waiting, I'm going to suggest that we each write down two names, and we'll hand them to Karen, and if any of the names get three votes, they're selected. Is that all right?
Or just the top vote? Top two votes, I would say.
Well, I think they should have three. If no one gets, say, one gets three, and no one else, then we revote.
Yeah.
I'd make that motion.
The majority of the board, that one. Motion is second to vote in that manner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Sorry, Tina, we keep you waiting.
No problem. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tell us anything you want us to hear.
Well, I hope you had a blessed Independence Day yesterday. It was very celebratory for most of us. Just to let you know, my background is, I'm just a normal citizen, never been involved in government before. I have lived in Pennington County for thirty-one years. My husband and I have been, how do I want to say it, supportive of making our county better in the way that, by helping, keeping housing low. We are landowners. We're property owners and landlords. We're members of many civic organizations that help better the community. And, as you know, forty-eight percent of the constituents in my district trusted me enough in voting for me for a state senate. So I am very involved in helping my constituents. Many of them have called me on, because they know they can count on me and getting whatever answers they need. As a matter of fact, I had a call the other day about water rates that their families owned water rates for fifty years, and she called me and wanted me to help her with that. In the planning and zoning, we want to keep, make sure that the county has the ability to stay involved and be able to support the communities around us, you know. And all I can ask is that you have looked at my resume once before, so you know who I am. I've been here before you many times. Not always in the best eye, but all I can do is just ask for your vote.
Any questions for Tina?
Mr. Chair. Tina, one of the concerns is always time. I mean, this can take a lot of time.
I am retired.
You are? Okay, all right. I couldn't remember that.
Yes, I am retired. All I do is take care of my husband, and I grow my own food.
He's not enough, huh?
No. No, he's pretty easy, you know. Yeah, I have, yeah, I have plenty of time.
Right, okay, good. I just want to always make sure people understand it takes time.
Oh, yeah, in learning that, in doing what, being members of many of the civic organizations, that takes time, you know. So, yeah, I'm very aware of the amount of time it would take, especially if I want to do a good job.
Thanks.
You know.
Any other questions for Tina?
You answered mine, that you are retired and you do have the time, Ms. Tina, so I appreciate it.
No, I'm retired, not retarded.
Thanks, Tina. That'll help on your interview.
Okay, anything else? If not, thank you, Tina.
Thank you, sir.
We will mark our ballots, and Holly, if you will, take them over to Karen, please.
I thought I was going to, too. I have three names.
Mine's a not folded-up one.
I'm not ready yet, I'm sorry. I wasn't ready yet. Keep some paper in my pocket.
While we're counting the ballots, I want to commend all of you, each of you, for stepping forward and making yourselves available. Appreciate it.
A lot of good recommendations, guys. Thank you for coming forward. We have one individual with four votes, Travis Lassiter, so we'll need to vote again.
Okay. Oh, here we go.
We got some, sir.
I could just rip that one. Oh, you got it? Okay.
And we're voting for two each time?
I think it's just one now.
Just one now.
One.
Okay, just one, all right.
Are you buying lunch for one, Travis?
You forgot to tell you, four votes means five lunches. Five lunches for four votes. Actually, I ate so much yesterday for Fourth of July, I don't think I need lunch.
That's true.
I picked up some food yesterday.
You're not making it easy.
Again?
Again.
Can we eliminate anybody?
Not according to Robert's rules. Everybody has an equal shot.
Okay.
Will we order pizza for dinner?
That's all right. Thank you.
Your time limit?
One more time. Probably switch, because we were.
I ran out of paper. Can you buy some?
It's hard to know. We can't do the top three or something. This'll go all day, you know, if we keep doing it this way.
Lot of good candidates, hard to pick.
Oh, we do.
Marsh received three votes.
Okay, congratulations to Bossyville, and thank you.
Yeah.
And thanks to all of them, Peter.
Rich Marsh and Travis Lassiter.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Next item is item twelve. SDSU Extension Regional, Rapid City Regional Center.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You brought the whole office?
Yeah, no, we almost. We're just here for informational purposes only, so if you have any questions for us, please feel free to ask. We're just here to represent SDSU Extension.
Who are you?
Just to give an update, and I am Peggy Schlechter, we'll do all introductions here in just a minute. But we're just here to give an update about what's happening with SDSU Extension since our reorganization here about five years ago. We are located in three separate offices here in Rapid City, but we all do work together, and we've got all three offices represented. So we'll just do some quick introductions now. Like I said, I'm Peggy Schlechter, Community Development Field Specialist.
I'm Lisi Brown, the Gerontology Field Specialist. I didn't come to the mic, could you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you tell me what that is?
Gerontology is the study of aging in older adults.
Thank you.
You better get to know her.
Says the man with more gray hair.
Senior, subsenior, we keep calling them that.
I'm Jason Shook. I'm the Program Manager for the Beginning Farmer Rancher.
For the what?
The Beginning Farmer Rancher Program.
Hi, I'm Kristy Kimmack, and I am the Director for the Ag Center. So a different location, but we are on the other side of town and have a lot of research and extension faculty out there, so be happy to give you any updates I could.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Prairie Walkling, and I'm also a Community Development Field Specialist.
Guy on the phone last week.
Yes, I'm Matthew Olson, SDSU Extension 4H Youth Program Advisor for Pennington County, and also identified by Pennington County as the Department Head for 4H and Extension. I was the voice from above last week during our budget request meeting, so. We partner with all of the offices here, both the Regional Center and West River Ag Center, and some of our programming for 4H. For example, we have our, we utilize a couple of AmeriCorps from the Regional Center for our programming with the Olliatee Center, and also some of our monthly workshops. And then with West River Ag Center, we have Kathy Reeves out there, who's a 4H Specialist, who we work with on our dog project and robotics and shooting sports. So we partner with them to provide our programming.
I thought you'd bring Baxter for a big speech today as well, so we missed him last week. Since last week, I should say. In your packet, you've got a list of staff from all of the regional centers in South Dakota, as well as the West River Ag Center. The 4H Youth Advisors aren't on there because there's different people for each county. We just wanted to come and let you know that we're still here, where we're located. The Rapid City Regional Center is located in the lower level of the First Interstate Bank near Menards. And of the people here, all of us except for Matt and Kristy work in that building. Kristy's at the West River Ag Center, which is still over on Plaza Drive, and you know where Matt is located. So we would just entertain any questions that you have. Also in our packet, there is some information about Beef SD, a cattle mineral nutrition information program, and Annie's Project. Those were submitted by Adele Hardy, who is a cow-calf field specialist, and she was unable to be here today. So she wasn't able to answer any questions. She thought she'd put some information in.
Well, ma'am, I would have a question. Because we don't know a lot about, or I should say, myself don't know a lot about your program, and it would be nice sometime maybe to call us or email us and see what each one of you do, or if you're having a program where we can come watch. I like doing that myself, so it would keep us, or me, well-informed on what you do, so.
We would be very happy to do that, and just happy to have you at any of the programs we do and answer any questions you have, because we know that you can help advocate to the citizens of Pennington County.
And that's the bottom line. Anything we know, we can reach out and send people to you folks for help on what they need, so I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I just want to offer a reminder that our positions are all statewide, except for Matt and Prairie. Well, you're sort of statewide, but we're statewide appointments, so if we don't have somebody here in Rapid City and they're in Watertown, you can call them. They serve you, too. It's not just us in Rapid City that serve you.
For me, I just kind of see what you do.
Definitely.
I like to see what people do, and then I kind of can relay that a little bit more than just reading something. And if we don't know where to send them at that point, then it would be nice.
Definitely. We're a great place to start.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, ma'am, what you're saying is Commissioner Busker needs to get on the list right away for the gerontology stuff.
I might say you as well.
How old do you take them where they can still get self-help?
We're all aging.
I have to say that I was on, I am on the Aging, it's Pennington County Aging Commission, or Committee, and I have had the privilege of serving with her before, so.
It's not the aged.
She knows I'm not as old as I look.
It's not the aged committee, it's the Aging Committee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further?
Thank you, folks.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks, it's nice to see your face.
Okay, item thirteen.
Can I ask a question? Do we usually let people come up here and, I guess, depending on what is said, and would we do that to anybody else on here? And let them put it on the agenda and do a complaint? Don't we just read them? Or what is the purpose of putting this forward up here?
Citizens' request.
Is it because we have to do a new vote on it? Is that why we're doing it?
Possibly, yes.
I guess that's my question, because it, there's, we took a vote and and one person doesn't need or isn't supposed to vote on it. Is that what we're doing today?
We can reconsider anything.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. Is it a reconsideration?
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, good morning. My name is Frank Carroll. And I'm the, my wife and I are the sole guardians without limitations and conservators for Lauren May Carroll-Porbear, who's my daughter. And we came before you on June tenth, I believe it was, to ask you to rescind a, or to ask you to relieve a lien on some property that Lauren owned. And as it turns out, she had real interest in the property, apparently, prior to the property becoming a trust property in her name, but over which she has no ownership. And what happened was, without her consent and without our approval, Yankton, folks at Yankton assigned legal representation to Lauren, and that resulted in a bill of two thousand-plus dollars. And that was sent forward to you for payment, and so you put a lien on Lauren's property. This was against our wishes. We were adamant about that with Yankton. They nevertheless proceeded with that bill. But, so I would like you to reconsider that matter, but what I'm really here for is that in the first vote, Mr. Farabee quite rightly abstained from voting. And I think, Nancy, at that time, you asked him why he abstained, and he explained that we have a conflict of interest, and we do. We have a longstanding conflict of interest, and so he recused himself and abstained from that vote. In reading the records of the last vote that you took to rescind the release of the lien, it turns out that Mr. Farabee led the motion, made the motion to rescind that, and then also voted on it. And in my opinion, that was improper and unethical. And I would ask you to revote on the matter, absent Mr. Farabee's participation.
Do we have the paper on the lien that we voted on? Do we have those, that information?
In a minute. In a minute.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't put that back in the packet again.
Because is there new information on the lien release to Mr. Carroll, or the gist that you're worried about, or the voting of Mr. Farabee? Can you tell me?
Well, I have two, I have two issues, I guess. One is that this charge against my daughter was imposed without her knowledge or understanding, and without consulting us in any way, and so I feel it's an unfair charge. But my real issue here today is that it was improper for Mr. Farabee, as he said himself at the time in response to a question from Nancy about why he was abstaining. And the reason he abstained is because he and I have a long history, and it was proper for him to recuse himself from matters that involve me or my family, especially where I'm the direct representative and guardian of my daughter.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that information.
Jay?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Just a couple points real quick. If the Board were of the mind to change or take any further action on this agenda item, it wouldn't be a motion to reconsider, it'd be a motion to rescind. It's too late to reconsider, but you can rescind. So I just wanted to make that clear, it's not reconsideration, it's rescission. The other item, I guess, if you were to go down that road, you'd first want to inquire of Commissioner Farabee if he sees that he has a conflict, because then he would not participate in any further action you would take. You might recall, if a Commissioner does not recognize a conflict, but two-thirds of the remaining body determine that he or she has a conflict, you would take that vote. So I'll stand by and kind of watch where you're headed and try to offer assistance as you go.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Carroll?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can, you know, sometimes we have so many things, I kind of forget, but wasn't it the issue that we were concerned that there was some property that the lien could be attached to? We don't have control over when they put the lien on from Yankton, but wasn't it, can you help refresh our memory on that, Jay?
At the time the lien arose, Lauren was the sole owner of the property. The property had not yet been placed in trust.
Okay.
And so when the application was filled out, it just didn't include this additional interest, and I think the Treasurer and the Auditor's Office caught that and wanted to bring that back in front of the Board, just so you were aware of that. Once you were aware of that, as you might recall, you rescinded the original motion releasing the lien, which brought that request to release the lien back in front of you, and then you did a motion to deny the lien. So that's where you stand at this point.
So, Mr. Carroll, do you understand that then, what we are reconsidering, not only the vote, but we are voting again on the issue? Am I correct?
Well, yes, and I, and truthfully, if that's the matter, I didn't understand that piece of it, but if that's the case, I don't have any problem with that, but I think the vote should be taken properly.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I can just add, if you took no action today, your prior motion stands, meaning the request to release that lien was denied. So you can take no action, or you can proceed to take some action.
Okay, what's your wish?
I guess we should ask George if he's going to rescind, was the, Mr. Alderman's...
Refree?
Yeah, what he asked, to see if he's going to rescind first. That would be the first thing. And then the second would be, if he doesn't, then we decide as a Board, if it's two-thirds vote, if he does have a conflict of interest. Am I correct?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, there's no way I can find that there's a conflict of interest without hearing the story, and maybe nobody wants to tell the story, but, you know, you just can't say, I mean, everything I've always read was, it is up to the individual to say, I have a conflict of interest. And I know if he doesn't, if he refuses to do that, fine, then I guess we can vote that there is one, but, man, I gotta have a lot more information than I got right now.
Well, the bottom line is, let's see if George thinks he does. If he doesn't, and they decide to do the story, then we do the story, but if George says he does, I don't think they need to voice it in front of everybody. It's up to George, or Commissioner Farabee, sorry, George.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I recall, and there's a record of it, obviously, I'm almost certain that it was Commissioner Hagganck had asked me about abstaining, but asked me to here and there. I abstained, and I didn't use the word conflict of interest, I used the phraseology judgment. I'll hold on the judgment for a moment. Mr. Carroll, have we ever met?
Yes, we have.
When and where?
When I opposed you with, in the Bruce Rampleberg campaign, and Hot Springs was an example, in which you came up to me and told me how disappointed you were in my activity on behalf of Bruce Rampleberg.
And you would say that under oath?
Absolutely. I can continue with my examples.
Excuse me, I got the floor.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I adamantly deny that I've ever, ever met this person, and when I say "met," shook hands with him. He wrote some horrible, horrible, horrible arguments, articles when I ran against ex-Senator Bruce Rampleberg, some horrible, horrible things. And the reason I abstained that meeting was because I want, well, he should have asked me to abstain. Anybody that thinks my judgment's that poor, I don't want to be voting on his issue. Now, that was then. The last meeting when we rescinded, we had before us a piece of paper that contradicted, and this piece of paper was from the Treasurer or the Auditor, to make a difference from Pennington County, a piece of paper that wasn't consistent with what we represented in the meeting prior. So that's why I stepped in. When you present two conflicting pieces of paper, then I'm going to step in, and that's why I stepped in. That's not only ethical, that's the way we are supposed to operate. It was two, your wife, I presume Audrey's your wife, and I've never, ever met her.
No.
I didn't even recognize, I had no idea who she was until, anyway, I knew who you were because you're in the picture, in the paper all the time, anyway. So here's a piece of paper that said, nope, no assets. Here's another piece of paper that says there are assets. That's why I voted, Mr. Carroll. That's why I voted, and I would really like an apology from you for the rotten, rotten things you said about me.
I think...
During the campaign, thank you. No conflict of interest. No conflict of interest.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess we do have an ethical respons, no, guess, I know, we have an ethical responsibility when we are elected to an office, to leave our campaign issues outside this door. We are here to do what's right, and because you have campaign issues with an individual is not supposed to affect your decision and how you handle it. That's what ethics is, George.
And the conflicting information doesn't make sense to me, George, because it's the same person. If it wasn't the same person, it'd be different, but it's the same person both times whether you're, once you abstain, you're abstained. That means you had some kind of interest in it at some point, so once you moved it to the next step, whether the Auditor changed the issue or not, it's still the same person. And that, when I just listened to you, you do have some issues, so I guess I would have abstained just because of that, but...
But Mr. Chair...
We're just saying, the bottom, hold on, Commissioner Farabee, so George says he's not basically rescinding, so the next step is to vote if we believe he has a conflict.
Mr. Chair, County Auditor or Treasurer bought us a piece of paper that was inconsistent with the piece of paper that was previously presented to us by Mr. Carroll and his wife. That's why I stepped in.
Same person, George.
Obviously, obviously, I'm going to take the side of the Treasurer or the Auditor, if there's two pieces of paper that are inconsistent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I got one more thing. You know, it is a difficult question, but I'm not sure it's a conflict of interest to vote on things that, against or for people who you like or don't like. If that was the case, I probably wouldn't vote half the time, because a lot of people I don't, don't like me. But, that being the case, I don't think it's a conflict of interest. You know, I, yes, I don't want you to get involved with the campaign, that's a different story, but I'm not sure it's a conflict of interest to vote on stuff that they don't like. That happens all the time.
I believe it looks different when you're up front and you're arguing with the man and conflicting with him over stuff, you're very angry at him, if you're over it and it's a done, everybody's not going to like us, we're not going to like them, but there's still issues, and that was just shown by George. So if George said, you know, I voted on it because, you know, that's the way I voted, but he got mad at him because he did not, the way he treated him on the campaign, so there's still a conflict. Now, if there was nothing said, just like if I was with somebody and I still had anger on him, I think I shouldn't vote on it, then I'm not going to make a decision on it correctly, but if you're still angry at someone, if you abstain the first time, that was why I said that, you abstain the first time, it's the same name. So if he thought he had abstention the first time, now he's saying, well, it's because of the way the Treasurer put it, it's still the same name, so...
Do we know what the vote was the first, last time around?
It was unanimous.
So unless you present some different information, the vote's not going to change, whether it's five to nothing or four to nothing, I don't know what the difference is.
I think it's, our history goes much further back than that, when I was a federal officer. And we can get into it if you want to, but it goes back many years, and so I just think that in the interest of good government, if it was me who was up there in George's place, and George came before this group, I would do exactly what George did the first time, which is recuse myself from consideration of issues which involved first me, not as the injuring party to George, but George as the injuring party to me and the people that worked with me, and then in the campaign for Rampleberg after I retired. So we have a long history of animosity, which in my mind, in civil government, we commonly, I wish the judge was still here, we commonly recuse ourselves from things where we have, call it whatever you will, maybe it's not a conflict of interest, maybe it's inability to judge fairly on an issue just because of the feelings that you have for a person.
And the bottom line is, what would George do? And I believe he talks about good government and treating people fairly and the constituents matter, so same again, George, follow the rules, these are the rules and regs that were set forth, and you are stickler for those rules, and now you're telling them us differently. So again, you abstained the first time, second time you didn't, that means you had a conflict to me, in my eyes.
Mr. Chair, for the third time, I voted on a piece of paper presented to us by the County Auditor slash Treasurer. That's what I voted on, thank you.
It's my opinion that this discussion has sort of run its course, and the process of us making motions or rescinding or whatever is somewhat mute in terms of what the details are. What's your wish as a Commission?
I think we can take a vote on that, but again, number two step for, if you believe it's non-conflict, and that's the bottom line, then we should vote on that and then move forward, because a constituent has a concern, Jay has gave us an opinion, first to ask George, sorry, Commissioner Farabee, and then if not, vote on a conflict of interest.
I'm going to ask Jay for some guidance here.
If you were to proceed on a vote on the conflict of interest, I'd just remind you that it takes a two-thirds vote, so four of you would have to pass that motion to declare that Commissioner Farabee has a conflict of interest, and then to proceed forward with whatever additional motions would follow.
And that would probably tell us where we're going next, anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask Jay this? So if we're voting on a conflict of interest, because it's about Commissioner Farabee, does he vote?
Well, you haven't found the conflict of interest yet. And it takes four of you, anyway, so...
No matter what, okay.
Say again, Jay, we have not found the conflict of interest.
I would say take the vote, and all five of you vote, because it's going to take four of you, anyway.
Well, it's going to make the difference for me if you're saying we didn't find the conflict of interest.
Well, if you don't have, if you don't have four Commissioners voting to find the conflict, then there is no conflict, and Commissioner Farabee would be able to participate in discussion and voting in any further action you would take today on this item.
I guess I thought you meant the other way, meaning you thought there was no conflict of interest based on what you just heard. It's not that, you're just staying out of it.
I'm not making that call for you.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just took it the other way, okay, thank you, sir.
What's your wish?
Mr. Chair, just to make sure, you know, Frank, it probably is not going to change, because change the original thing. What we're really here for is the conflict between you and Commissioner Farabee. And to me, the appropriate thing is to, for you to file a complaint to the County, an official complaint, and then we would, as we have had to do in recent times, review that in executive session, go through the whole thing again. I, I mean, we would go through that process again.
Mr. Chairman, before we get going further, I read your column too, and probably when you were talking about Rampleberg and George, I agreed with you most of the time. I'm going to have to vote against the conflict of interest, because I don't think it is, but, not that I would have voted against your column.
I'm glad somebody reads it.
I think that told you your answer, because we need four votes to change it, and I believe...
Okay, well, thank you very much, I just wanted to bring that forward, because I believe in ethical government, and I think that in these situations, people should recuse themselves when there are these problems.
Mr. Carroll, just like I had told the man earlier, everybody counts and every constituent does, so we appreciate your thoughts and your understanding of how this works, so...
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 14.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. What you have before you is something that I referenced at our budget hearings a week or so ago, that we anticipated receiving, an additional grant from VOCA, the Victims of Crime Act, that would allow us to install an additional victim assistant. That person would be hired at a 14 underneath Tracy Dawson Decker, who you were introduced to here recently and swore in at the beginning of the year, or beginning of the spring, as our new Victim Witness Coordinator. I do believe that this is a good step for the County, it is revenue neutral to the County, and I do think that if, as I mentioned the other day, if Marcy's law passes, this will only be the beginning of what we would have to have on board to comply with everything that's required by what would then be a constitutional amendment. But regardless of that, we run fairly close to the bone as it is with victims' assistance. I think it'd be a very good thing to have. I understand Commissioner Buskerud in particular, but all of you have voiced concerns about positions that will then, perhaps the grants will fade. VOCA has been around a long time, and they have renewed their grants at the same level or increasing levels historically, and my understanding from our congressional delegation that I got to talk to when I went out to lobby on behalf of the National District Attorneys' Association, that VOCA money is relatively solid in Congress, and so I would anticipate that that wouldn't be an issue down the road, though of course, as we... though of course, as with any grant, I can't tell you with certainty. But my motion would be twofold. One is to approve the supplement allowing us to both hire a new person and the additional revenue line that would accompany it. And then just to inform you that obviously I would be making a similar adjustment to our 2017 budget that we'll be dealing with here over the course of the summer.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, we're not approving the supplement today, correct? Okay, Jay, this is the set of hearing for the supplement?
That's correct.
And, and before you come back next time, I, I have a question that I need answered. We have already, you've already, you want sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars to cover the salary and benefits of the additional FTE, which we paid for out of over collected revenue. So you already have gotten that sixty-six thousand, correct, KJ? And they've gotten it out of, call it what you want, it's out of the reserves. Says over collected revenue. Or is that from the grant?
My understanding, this is a new addition to the VOCA grant that we'll receive.
I think I see what happened. It is over collected revenue in the sense that we didn't anticipate this VOCA grant when we made our budget last year. With this grant money, if it comes in, we would then have over collected revenue compared to our budget submission for 2016.
Not coming out of the reserves. Okay, because then I want it put back in the reserves.
I agree.
It's, it's, it's like a, a new grant, except that it's just an addition to this one.
Because their fiscal year and ours don't line up, it shows up as over collected revenue.
And it'll hit both 2016 and 17.
Thank you. Got to keep you on your toes. You've got nothing else to do.
Mr. Chair, if I can tag on, there's a document here that's about, I don't know, twenty pages or something. On page one, it says amount provided by state or grantor is. The next line, amount matched by grantee, and then total grant amount. So in plain language, we're granting to ourselves.
If you look at the grant money coming in, again, is the over collected revenue?
Well, no, 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 stay on point.
All right.
Total grant amount, one hundred and thirty-six and some change.
He's talking about the way it's.
And that total grant amount includes us giving ourselves some twenty-seven thousand. How can that be?
That references what we do spend for the victim assistance programming. So in other words, they recognize the fact that we also spend money on victims assistance. That is not our, the entirety of our budget. This would have been a little more obvious back when we separated the VOCA grant out. But some of the costs borne by the victim's assistance programming have always been borne by the county.
Understand that, but it's presentation, we're granting to ourselves and that's just not the way I learned English. Thank you.
So we have a total of federal grants in our budget, four hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four, right? This is, or KJ?
Yeah, I'm afraid you'd have to ask KJ that one.
And I'm not certain what you're looking at.
I think you guys did what I asked you, which I think is awesome because I wanted to know a lot of times to bring the budget stuff forward that you're talking about for supplements. So we have all the information on it. And I'm looking at this, KJ, where the grants and stuff are.
We were still on this one, right?
No.
No, she went to the ledger sheet.
Four seventeen.
Where the grants are. This one? So I just wanted to know the total amount of grants. And then is the four seventeen, one twenty-four added?
That's, the four seventeen is, and that's where I was, I was reading the ending. In the 2016 budget, we originally budgeted to receive as revenue under the state's attorney, four hundred and seventeen thousand, one twenty-four. We will now receive an additional sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six.
Yes, ma'am.
And so doing that, we probably had to prove for eligibility to receive the money, some soft match is a term we tend to use, that Pennington County spends at least twenty-seven thousand dollars. When, when Mark referenced the separation of the budgets, we used to keep all those individual, you could see it. Now we have one full budget under state's attorney that includes victims assistance, VOCA, the state's attorney, VAWA, so we put it all into one.
So you put the whole hundred and six in the, okay. Thank you for bringing this paper. Remember, I was asking if you guys would bring. It makes a difference when you can see it, KJ, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? So the motion you're looking for is to schedule a hearing for the nineteenth, is that correct?
Correct. And to approve the FTE now and then to approve the budgetary. We needed the additional time on the budgetary, but approving the FTE would allow us to begin the hiring process.
Two motions.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to allow the state's attorney's office to advertise for a new FTE position and victims advocate due to the VOCA grant and will continue as long as we get that money. And it's the end of the day we don't get the money.
I think I second that.
Is there a second?
We'll just take it out of the highway.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Motion carried. So we need a second motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to set up a supplemental hearing for the July nineteenth meeting to, to consider the addition of the new VOCA grant to the budget.
There's a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item fifteen, A.
Good morning. Mike Cool with Pennington County Buildings and Grounds, construction project manager.
Good morning.
We have a couple of items on the agenda for you this morning. I'd, I'd like to provide you with a little bit of background information related, that kind of relates to both of these items. I have some handouts I'll give you as well.
While it's thinking.
Nancy, do you have background on why we ended up redoing and as the Pennington County Board, why we are in charge of redoing the courthouse? How about that and monies towards that? What's that?
Well, we own it. We're responsible for it.
And then we decided to do it, why?
To do the remodel.
Yes, just some history since you've been on the building committee on this a little bit before Mike starts. And you've been there for a while.
Well, originally, what started the master planning was that we knew we were going to be receiving more judges and we had no place for them. We could build a new courthouse, but it's extremely expensive to build judges' chambers and their accompanying space needs, the courtrooms, et cetera. So we tried to find a different solution. And the solution really became it's cheaper to move our functions at the county level, treasurer, register of deeds, auditor, et cetera, to an office building as we're in now. This is a lot less expensive per square foot. So we began the process of figuring out what was the best way to efficiently build a new building and put all of our offices here, leaving the courthouse and the courthouse annex for the future of the court systems. And we have, you know, we've got this building, we've gone on and now we are, as part of the master plan, we knew we'd have to go back and look at the courthouse because we have to provide, and we have, I think we're full with judges now, thanks to our state legislators. We have had to provide space for those court services as well as the judges, their chambers and all that they require. And that's the process we have been going through. But there is some, there are some issues structurally over there. That's what we're starting through. So that's, that's pretty basic, but I would say that's what got us here.
And Mike, also, thank, thank you, Commissioner Nancy.
You lost my name.
So Mike, there was a couple pretty big issues with, we call it the terrarium or I call it that, where the water was underneath, a lot of that area they had to change. And I mean, it was a big issue that that could sink in. I mean, some of this stuff isn't done because we just want a nicer courthouse. It's because there were some major issues there. And I think the public likes to know that we're not just spending money frivolously, that we're actually doing it because it's a have to at this point in a lot of the area in the courthouse. So maybe you can structurally tell us some of those issues as well and for the public as well, that they, they know why we're doing it. Nancy gave a great overview, but you know structurally why we had to do some of this stuff.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the input. Commissioner Troutman has been very involved with the process that we moved through here and now. Commissioner Hancock is, as well. So they're very well aware of the issues that we're trying to deal with. I, I won't get into it a great deal in regard to the issues relative to water intrusion issues. I have a couple of members of our design team present who have assisted us with doing some preliminary work who are going to talk a little bit about those issues. But one of the primary drivers in regard to the entrance addition, just to touch on Commissioner Hancock's request, is that we are experiencing some water intrusion issues relative to the plaza outside the entrance of the building that need to be dealt with. It's causing some corrosion of the structural system underneath there. That is a, an open space, enclosed space below that area that is utilized primarily for transport of inmates to and from the courthouse when they're attending court. It also serves a lot of mechanical functions as well in that area. But that is one of the primary reasons why we are looking at this entrance. Beyond that, we, you know, we're also trying to, with this entrance, we're trying to address some of the issues that are, have been identified through our facilities master plan, also recognized by security within the courthouse. But those would be dealing with the location of the security checkpoint. We don't have a very good location for that right now where it occurs right now at an elevation transition in the building. So we have people that are trying to walk up steps and walk through security at the same time. So plus it pushes, the security station becomes, is in the circulation path for the elevators and just courtrooms as it'll be, the circulation area will be used for now here in the future. We are also trying to deal with that floor transition area that I mentioned by creating a ramp in there as well. And I, and I'm not going to get into this too much because you'll see some of that with their presentation of what they're proposing of doing.
So, Mr. Cool, is some of it disability or ADA driven as well? Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. Currently, we handle that transition with a lift, which isn't a very quick and efficient way of moving people through the building, trying to utilize this old lift that we have. So part of it is creating a ramp then, so you can access the elevators that are a different level than at the entry plaza level.
And, and the bottom line is, is once you change some of those moisture issues and some of those things that we had issues with, the minute, that's when you have to upgrade with the ADA because it's not grandfathered in. Once you change, I mean, some of that you still have to have in there.
Correct.
But once you.
Yeah, once we start doing any modifications, then we have to meet 2010 ADA requirements.
Right.
As part of that. And that's something that the county is currently dealing with in a number of facilities that we're going through and reviewing and making sure that our facilities are up to ADA requirements.
And I think that background is good for the community to know that it's just, we're doing it because, again, it's something that we need to do because of ADA. Again, because of the moisture, there is some issues and they're not little issues. They're things that have to be done, not that we're just wanting a remodeled building. So I appreciate that, Mike. Mr. Cool.
With that, I'll just go to the slides and this is the information that I provided you in paper form. This is just a kind of a, I just stuck this graphic in here. This comes from the facilities master plan. I just wanted to show you that the courthouse was one of the items that was included within that master plan that was, that we saw we needed to do something with it. And, and indicating of an addition right there as well to the front end, or front entryway. These were a number of items that were identified as issues within the facilities master plan, space deficiencies and program drivers. And down at the bottom bullet points talks a little bit more of the things that will be addressed with the, with the second agenda item. The first agenda item begins to deal with a number of these other issues that are listed above. And this is the, the information that I thought was most pertinent that I wanted you, the commissioners, to see. The top graph or spreadsheet that we're showing on this sheet is from a 2007 office space study that we did internally. What's important about this document, what I wanted to show you is the overall square footage of the building, which is a hundred and eleven thousand square feet. And then what the usable, actual usable square footage of the building is. This is when you start taking out all the circulation, all the walls, all the mechanical, electrical spaces, stuff for the building. And, you know, because this is a public building with large public corridors and stuff, the actual usable space in the building at that time is, was about fifty-five thousand square feet. So it's almost, almost half of the building is either dedicated to circulation or, or to mechanical spaces or walls and such, or support spaces. This bottom graph, what it shows is, this comes from the facilities master plan from 2010 again. And it shows what our needs are going to be over. We were trying to predict out fifteen years ahead of what we might need. And that is indicating, I'm sorry, I'm not, I can't read that very well, but I'll pull it up here for you. At the time, fifteen years out, we're looking at a need of over eighty-eight thousand square feet. So there is a, there's a real need coming or likely within the courthouse. The projects that we're talking about are just an interim step towards this. We're doing the best of what we can with what we have. And with the addition, which is the second item on the agenda, we're trying to capture some additional space when we're building a new entrance onto the building to, so that we can begin to try and address some of these future needs as they. try and address some of these future needs as they, as they develop. With that, I have members from Fennel Design and Co-op Architecture. And I'll ask them to come up and present their information. We're asking you to, we're going to look at the, the remodel work right now of the existing building, where we're trying to create three additional courtrooms. And then after we address that issue, then we're looking at trying to have you take a look at the new entrance addition that we're proposing.
Started with Gene Fennel, Fennel Design.
Jared Sardel with Co-op Architecture.
Fennel Design and Co-op Architecture have joined together on this project.
Does that help you?
Yes, especially after my recent back surgery, it's much better. And Fennel Design is the lead on this project and Co-op is just providing support and advice. So, the first thing that we're going to look at, and I've just loaded it here, so it might take me a little bit to pull that up. Okay, the first image you're seeing right there is the courts annex building, first floor as it exists today. So, this is that plaza that was discussed right out in this area. And then you come through the vestibule and this is the handicap lift, for those that are familiar with it. And right in this place where I've placed the little hand, that is where the security takes place, right at the top of these stairs. Very uncomfortable situation, very challenging. Mike spoke of the usable space and he talked about large corridors, et cetera. And we have to have those just because there's so many people coming and going and when you have a court release, you know, there's quite a few people in these areas, there's conversations that happen out in these areas. So, they're, they're very necessary in a courts complex. So, this is the existing space. Now, let me just quickly run through what is there currently, and that's right where I've got the hand now. That was the commission space, the space that we're in right now. And it is being utilized as, as a court space at this time as well as it can be, it's a cumbersome situation. This is all of the deeds and records space. That would be repurposed into a courtroom and all of the ancillary functions that go with that, the court recorder's office, the judge's office, the jury areas, et cetera. This area over here would become another courts space. This is where the auditor was before the move. And that space would be reconfigured into a court space. The area back here would be pretty much left alone, some cosmetic upgrades. This area in here would be the deliberation spaces is what would be happening back in this area. So, that's what was, is. This is the plan that we're talking about and this is, again, just the first four remodel project. What we're doing is we're reconfiguring how the prisoner transport works. We're going to be bringing some prisoners up through the hallway, dash them across the corridor to get to this courtroom. So, there's the courtroom, the judge's space, the court recorder's space, the judge bench. So, we just walk you through that real quick and then deliberation room back in this area. This would be the second courtroom in this area, entrance here, judge's chambers, court recorder, kind of squeezing it back into this little place. Trying as much as possible to leave this area that you see right here in the middle. Trying to leave that as we, as, as it is because that's your restrooms, that's the state's IT department, those things, which they just repurposed the county's IT department into their own and they're leaving things pretty much the same place. But this would be courtroom two, deliberation room back in here. And then we have courtroom three, which is a smaller courtroom. It's not as large as we would like it, but it's the space we have. So, we're working within that and getting as much efficiency as we can out of this. We've worked with the judiciary to make sure that we're treating things the way they should. A lot of these spaces that you see, these little closets and such through there, those are mechanical spaces. Those are not changing. However, we're doing an entire mechanical system upgrade. The VAV boxes, which are the air exchange systems, heat and cooling, distribution system, all above these ceilings will be upgraded. It's time, it's 30 years, so it's time. A lot of the door hardware is being upgraded, again, ADA, et cetera. We're, we're taking care of that as we go through the process. So, that's that project. Now, back up here on this little part, this is the only exterior part of this project. And this is a security issue that we have right now with those north stairs that go out of the building. This is really an employee entry exit. And in plan, if I bring this little hand down here, that's where the officers and the judges enter underneath the building. There's the big roll-up gate on, on St. Joe that they come under. And when they're sitting there waiting for their vehicle, there's really kind of a barrier wall that somebody could hide behind and do something really, really stupid and dangerous. So, the idea with that is to take those walls down, turn this into a very ethereal, transparent configuration and also solve some of the problems with snow and ice buildup and everything, use a graded stair system and everything so that those elements just go right through the stairs and it's a little easier. We've had some slip and falls there and we want to eliminate that problem too. So, that's the only part of this project. The reason we tied it to this interior remodel is that this will be the coming and going of all the materials and the workmen during the remodel so that we leave this front available to the public. And then that contractor would have control of the remodel of those stairs at the appropriate time. So, it just makes sense to tie that in with this project. All right, Mike?
All right. So, we're, we're seeking authorization from the commission on is a authorization, authorization of a design contract and we're also requesting to allow us to go to bid on this. Maybe to provide a little more background information relative to this. Most of the remodel work, we've been trying to handle within buildings and ground to, to the most, to whatever ability that we've been able to. What we're, what we're seeing now with this larger remodel on this floor, that it will be too much for us to, to handle internally. We have remodeled the former treasurer's area that was over in the old, original courthouse that has become clerk of courts and currently are getting near, nearly, nearly done with a remodel of the former clerk of courts area, what's being converted into court services offices, which is, as I said, nearing completion. But like I said, this is something that will, is, it appears that this is going to be too much for us to try and manage doing this with everything else that we have going on now. So, we are seeking authorization of this design contract and authorization to go to bid. The estimated cost, construction cost that the design team has provided is one to 1.2 million dollars to, to do this work.
Mr. Chair, just, just to make sure everyone understands, the funding is, is in place.
That's correct. We currently have about 26 million dollars for construction projects right now as we're moving forward, so.
So, Mr. Cool, on here it says 68,640 plus reimbursable expenses to be 1,300? And you said it was 1.2?
Yes, my apologies if I cause some confusion. The 68,000, 68,640 is the design, the design services that we're requesting your authorization on. And then there would be some reimbursable costs with that. The construction cost of the, for the work that these design services will relate to, they are estimating the cost at one to 1.2 million dollars.
And is that, does that include the mechanical?
Yes.
That's not on top of that?
No.
And Commissioner Troutman said that the money is in place, where is the money in place at?
It's...
It's, it's between, we have two, we have some monies left over in regard to the original master planning bonding. That money will be utilized first in these projects that we're doing. Then we have two additional bond issues in 2015 and 2016, so we have about 26 million dollars.
So, when you say two additional, are they two additional that we're going to do or two additional that get paid up so we can use that money?
I, I didn't understand the question.
Well, you said we have two additional bond issues, one in 15 and one in 16. Are we going to issue bonds then for this or are they bonds that are already in place that are going to get paid?
They are, they already are in place and the money is in the bank.
And so, we're, so we've already done the bond issue?
Yes, in 2015 and 2016.
And so, how does that, how are we going to pay for this and the building across the street then?
Right now, that, you know, as we're moving forward, we're still well within the amounts that we're, we're talking about. For the projects that we've brought before you here recently, we are probably talking in a range of 15 to 18 million dollars of, of projects.
Nice to be, nice to be rich, I'll say that.
Might I remind you, Ron, we have not raised a single person's taxes to do this project?
Not to do this project, but we are paying off all these bonds and that does take tax money.
Sure does, but when they're, they're paid off, we move it over to the...
We move them into the next project, we, we, if we got money, we spend it, right? There's no sense giving taxpayers a break of their taxes.
Well, Mr. Chair, just, just as a reminder, we could do nothing. We could go ahead and just let the water damage occur and, as we have done in the past, not kept up our buildings. And so, we are now in this situation where we have inadequate space. We have buildings that are not in the best of shape because people always have said in the past, "Well, I don't want to do that politically." And unfortunately, we do a disservice to our taxpayer because then it costs so much more because the damage is so deep. And so, I, you know...
It's been, tomorrow we say, time off.
I, I, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Troutman's comments. I would take a little exception to that the building, our buildings are in poor condition. I know she's...
They're not appropriate.
She's, she's making reference to one, you know, to, to an issue that we're trying to address with the projects we have before you at this time. But yes, I mean, in regard to our, trying to meet county needs and stuff, this is a very difficult process that we move through and we take our, a lot of time to make sure that we're making good, sound decisions and, and as we move forward with these projects and spend this money wisely to meet the, the facility needs that we have and...
And the bottom line, if you didn't need the buildings, that means you didn't need the services. And if we don't need as many services, that would be a blessing because then we all could fit in one building. So...
That's right.
The taxpayers, if they're not using the services, I think it's well, well justified. And the other thing is the mechanical, the moisture again, the ADA, how long are you going to hold that off? Because that's the taxpayers that are using that building and you are serving the taxpayers in that building. So, you could put it any way you want, again, who wants to do a bunch of new buildings? But the other sense is how long you want to keep putting buildings off because you, you say, "Well, the taxpayers this and the taxpayers that." Those are the ones that are, are using the services. So, bottom line again, I think Mike and Mike Peterson, the building committee, come to some of those meetings. See, that's where I learned at first that, I'm like, okay, this is crazy, we're doing these buildings. What are we doing with all these buildings? So, once you learn the mechanics of it all and what they're serving and what the needs are, it's the bottom line. If they're not needed, I learned that they are. If they're not having damage, if they're, if they can be utilized in a different way, Nancy's right, let's use them because I have buildings and I use them and then if I let them go too far, you already know, you have water damage if your roof's not done right, your, your mechanics, if they're not done right, then they cost you a lot more later. So, you can pay today or pay tomorrow. And at this point, hopefully, that the buildings that we are utilizing, the ones that we are selling, the ones that we are making remodels, and, and Mike told you a critical point there. They, they did a lot of that work in that building up to the point where they couldn't do it themselves. So, that told you something that...
I can even add to that, we can do it, but the timeframe, the judges are here now.
Right.
I mean, it's put a much larger squeeze on us. We don't have the time we thought we had originally. We're more than capable of doing it, but timeframe wise.
Right.
It's, this is money better spent.
And you got to trust the two guys that run this office that we don't have to micromanage them and think they're just spending the taxpayers' money unwisely. Again, go to a building committee, go to Mike and Mike's office, go there a lot. Make sure that they're spending it where they're supposed to. And I could tell you, I, when I first started here, I gave them lots of, okay, I can't say the word, but about how they spend, are you getting below that 10% on remodels? Just kept beating it to death. I could tell you, you got two efficient guys. My husband's a project manager and I'll say it again. When he saw Mike's duties and Mike Peterson's duty, holy cow, these guys are amazing. If you don't believe me and you just think I'm just talking to make these guys look good, go to their offices. Go see their people and what they do. Go see the things that they have remodeled themselves to save the taxpayers' dollars. You'd be surprised. I'll keep saying that only because when I, when I do something, I got to see it. I just told the lady today, I got to see it, I got to, I got to see it on paper, I got to see what you do. Because, you know what, I got to tell taxpayers, you know, you are spending this wisely. So, again, if, if I can't back it up, I'm not going to say it. So, that's my bottom line.
You've kind of missed, you've kind of missed the point of what I was getting at. It's not against Mike and Mike and how they're doing their job, they do a great job. I'm saying we cannot build every building this year. We cannot start million-dollar projects every year. It costs too much money. We've got to space it out a ways, not that we don't need them, but do we need them today?
You spaced them out 30 years and this is what happens. That's what happens is you get them so bad.
Well, I wasn't here 20, I wasn't here 30 years ago.
Moisture, moisture, and, and the ADA, okay, people with disabilities, we'll just keep walking them up and, and doing what we do. And security reasons, we'll just wait for another 10 years until there's a shooting or something bad happens. You don't wait till the, till something falls apart. It costs you more in the long run. You know that from your remodel in your house or anything you do. The longer you wait, the more it costs.
Okay, I think we have sort of gone past the question. Do we want to act on this particular request or don't we?
I don't.
And if so, I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll say it.
Mr. Chair, before we get there then...
Go ahead.
Do we have that, and I hate to bring it up, but I'm going to, that, that extra space on the first floor, is that issue be resolved or is that, is that kind of off limits?
The, the additional space, space the, for the entry?
Space in the vicinity of where the, where the state IT is, is that, is that space all, all accounted for now? Or have we resolved that issue or is that still, still with it?
You know, as far as we are concerned, the issue is resolved, the space has been dedicated for a purpose and...
It's off limits.
In other words, George, it's been resolved and we lost. We're not getting any red for it.
Yeah, that's true. But that's a separate issue.
The public should, the public should know that.
So, tell us the bottom line, what you guys are saying.
Well, the, the issue is in regard to... Well, the, the issue is in regard to, uh, the state utilization of the facility by a Supreme Court judge. And, and there were some concerns about whether the county should support that office need or not. And, and my understanding is that we have, there has been an agreement that we will allow them to have that office in there when, if there was some space available.
Right.
And the IT.
And the IT was...
Well, the IT, you know, to me, is one of the items that is a necessary function to support the court's system. There isn't a choice about those, those types of items.
Say by, say by no choice. IT is through the state. They, is it through us or through the state? So...
The state has its own IT system that's separate from the county IT system.
Right. And it's something that they utilize and need in that courtroom.
Right. That support, support those courtrooms.
Using it for more than the court's system.
Sorry?
They use it for more than the court's system.
They do utilize it for more than the, just the court's system, but it does support all the functions that, that the county has mandated to provide.
Thank you. I appreciate that because the general public needs to know what we're saying. That it's not empty space or space or, it's space that's being utilized through the state that...
That they're paying for. Yeah, that's right. That's what the taxpayers need to know.
There's nothing like open and transparent government and we don't have it, do we? Thank you.
Well, part's not open or transparent. He's just said everything you said, George.
There were housing and Supreme Court justice and a couple of legal assistants, I presume.
Anytime you want to talk, George, go ahead.
You suppose we could address the issue?
It, it is on the remodel. I just think we need the information.
We might have to include a, kind of an open forum in our agenda in the future.
[laughing] I'll make a motion if you'd like, sir. Are you ready?
I'm ready for a motion.
We could do some more forum stuff. It's kind of fun, actually. I authorize the chair's signature to the AIA document B105-2007, standard form of agreement between owner and architect, dated July 5, 2016, between Pennington County and Fennel Design Incorporated for professional services related to the design and construction of project identified as Pennington County Court's remodel for a total lump sum fee of $68,640 plus reimbursable expenses estimated to be $1,300 and authorized advertisement for bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make, I'll give a substitute motion. Since we will have, in less than six months, we'll have two new commissioners that be left, be holding the bag, so to speak, or be responsible for carrying this out. So I make a motion to delay this until, until
Is there a second? Died for like of a second. Back to the original motion, roll call vote.
Buscree?
No.
Farabee?
No.
Adcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item is item B. Thank you for that. The next item is the proposed addition to the front of the courthouse that will be dealing with the water intrusion issue as well as some of the security desk, that process moving through there. And with that, I, the design team has some more information to present for
Jared's going to run the screen for me while I talk. Co-op is the firm that really put these drawings that you're going to see together. So it's been a fun collaboration. We'll start with you, start you looking at the campus, right at the courthouse. And what we're proposing to do is do an addition that covers that plaza that's causing us so much water damage and intrusion and, and the ancillary areas. Opening that entryway up so that it really is more courthouse feeling, important building. And what we would do is we would step out into the parking lot a little bit because right now that's really kind of confusing as to how you arrive at this point and make it into a more interesting arrival point. And take care of the handicap parking, which you can just see with the little insignias show, you know, go to that area there. Right in this area, so that we have a, a real good entry for the, for those that are less fortunate than myself. And, and also kind of dress this plaza up a little bit. We've got a lot going on there with some infrastructure underneath the ground, et cetera. So now let's go into the first floor and walk you through how you would enter this location here. Okay, this is the bottom level and let's just go there, Jared, back to that basement level. What we're talking about is a, stop there, stop there. We're talking about an expansion here. I'll just grab the mouse so that I'm following myself. As you get out of your vehicle or however you arrive at this point, there's a handicap ramp that runs up in this area. Then you enter the building through these doors here. Kind of a raised podium similar to what you see over here on the St. Joe's side of the building. But again, that important feeling building. Enter through the doors here. This back in here is the security checkpoint. So we've got this kind of transparent wall so that the security officers, and this would be their office right in here in the corner of the existing historic courthouse, they have visual contact through this whole area so they can see everything that's going on in this area. What doesn't show up, but it's in our plans, is a little vestibule here. So that as you enter the building, it's encapsulated. The important point of this whole thing is now you've got a lot larger space to take care of these security issues and get people coming and going. So there's not this collision of everything that's going on currently. Then what we've done is we've taken away the steps, which also eliminates the handicap lift. We've done this by, by extending this out, we're cap, we can get a ramp inside of this. So it's just a handicap ramp accessible to everybody and everybody uses this ramp. So it's basically a tip platform that just rises you up to the existing floor level of the rest of the courts. This is the area that we just showed you as the remodel. And those are those steps on the north side that we just talked about. So now what we're doing is we're grabbing a little more floor space on this floor that used to be down because of that handicap lift that used to snuggle back into this corner. We're able to encapsulate that space and get our prisoner transport resolved a little bit better than we had. And we can also accommodate a building exit that has to take you completely outside the building. And we've grabbed that little space right in there. And then you've gone through the building, you've done your business, and now you leave. You come down that same ramp and you go out the west side. Now, right in this area that I'm showing you there, that is a skylight area that the prisoner transport goes under. And that skylight area's been having issues for years. And you can see it just by walking into the space. You can see the moisture coming down the walls. You can start to see rebar getting exposed because the concrete's spalling away. It just was a tough area and we're proposing that we turn that into more of a plaza because a lot of people, when they come out of those courts, you see them, they stop and they have conversations and such, and this would be a good place for that. Also some potential for some, some real iconic points, some viewpoints, possibly some sculpture, possibly a memorial wall along this wall of the building, which will stay. We'll have to clean that wall up some because right now it's, it's a flashing point. And so it's got tar and caulking and stuff on it, but we've got a plan for cleaning that up and taking care of that. So it kind of works this arrival point and the leaving point work together. So it becomes that, that, that place that people really want to go. Now, find, kind of a, just to help you out a little bit with how this works, let's go down one floor. Let's go down into the basement. And this is part of the, the challenge that we're facing with this project is that the infrastructure that's underneath, it ties together the courts annex, it ties together the historic building, and it encapsulates this prisoner transport. And just bring, bring it along the bottom there, Jared. The prisoner transport coming from the jail under the building, out of public sight, out of public interaction, and takes them to the elevator to the west. Go to there, expand out a little bit. Now, there you go. Just so we can see the whole thing and then move over to the left a little bit. There you go. Okay, so now you can see that. Come down this, this corridor area, go through the doors, loop back and get into the elevator. And the elevator's in dire need of upgrading, but that is a separate project that Mike Peterson said he'd just take on himself and, and get that result. But we're going to have to do some structural down in that space to accommodate this because we have some structure that's deteriorated. We need to upgrade that and we need to add some new structure. But we've got that figured out, how we do that. And that's a little micro pile machine that's about the size of this desk that we roll through a doorway and you can drill piles into the, into the soil, which is how the building is supported currently. So now let's move up a little bit. That's, okay, let's go up to the first floor. Okay. As part of this project, of course, what we're going to have to do is we're going to eliminate our entry to the building. So we're going to have to move over here to the left, to the old back door of the courthouse and reroute people. So, there, grab that. So right over in this area, this will become the public entry during the construction time. We'll have to do our security. There's an entryway into a courtroom right here. So we'll have to get that so that it's before you get to that entry point. And then we'll have to do a little ramp to accommodate these steps at this point. So we'll have to do a little ramp in here to get people into this elevator lobby. And, and get them into the courtrooms. When, when this part is finished, then people will be utilizing that. So this is an important part of this is that we have to accommodate that. Last, last step of this project would be this little piece right up here you see. And what that is, is that's giving handicap access to the original plaza raised dais, if you will, in the historic courthouse. Because right now there's no way to, to get people up to that level unless we do something very subtle. If we do something out here, it destroys the look of the building and the historic aspects. So we're working under a stairway right over in here. And that currently is the, the security office is what is being used. So for, so when we get accomplished this security office in this location, then that, then that's available to us. So that's first floor. Just go up. Second floor. Second floor, what we're doing here is we are just structuring it and what I call a white box, basically do the insulation and the sheet rock and stop until, until this space is absolutely needed. We know it's going to be needed soon, but in this project, we just want to get it there because it's more cost effective to build the entire structure than to come in and build it in pieces because you keep shutting down your entry point. So let's just get it structured in one time. So then it would go up to the third floor, similar look. And then in this case, we're, we're stepping back a little bit. So there's a little bit of a parapet around that and the space is a little bit smaller, but it helps us with our exterior look so that it all ties together and makes sense. And here's some images of what that would look like.
Aren't you going to do some improvement of the mechanical part of the whole thing?
Yes, yes. There's, and then there's another future project, which would be the whole historic building and the upgrades of that mechanical system. But we're looking at that as a separate project. But yes, there will be some mechanical upgrades in this as well, as well as insulation, energy efficiency, things like that that, that we're working on. Now, you might ask where that comes from. So let's just walk you around the building. And here's the north side of the building. This is what exists. This was the original entry point of that building. And that's the look that you have there. So as we're looking at this project, we brought that idea around the building so that it starts to tie the two buildings together with no deference to either side. And as you look at that north side, that north elevation, currently what's there is these massive walls around this. And we've turned it into a very ethereal, transparent stairway. Because this is where the judges and, and court officials and police come and go right in through here. So there's an idea of what it could look like. That's that plaza area. And back here, this is a handicap ramp that wraps around this landscape plan that helps, helps us with the transition of elevations and everything else, the waterproofing, all of those things taken into consideration as we go through this process. Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have a question. It's probably well needed. I do have a question about one of your statements, though, that you're going to build that in front so people really want to go there. I don't think there are all that many people that really want to go there.
I think the attorneys do.
In regard to, this, this, this project has been a, I don't know if I want to say difficult, but I mean, it's, the courthouse inspires a lot of passion within the building committee in terms of being respectful to that, that building and, and doing the right thing. And so we've done this preliminary work in, in order to, to, to work towards getting everybody on the same page of what this entrance should be. And so that everybody, the commission is aware of what we think this thing should look like. And, and, and what that means overall in terms of a project. So that's what our intent was with producing these images, is so that everybody is fully aware. We have a lot, we have a lot of work to do yet in regard to making sure that we have addressed historical issues and, and such yet. That'll be all part of the process as we move forward and working through those issues. But with that, I guess, I mean, if you have any questions about some of the things we've done, we can certainly respond to those. But what I've brought to you today is a contract that I'm seeking authorization for to continue on with the design of this facility, this entrance addition to this portion. And there, and maybe to clarify why we have two contracts for you, that, that's really was a matter of how we've proceeded in trying to address these projects. As I noted earlier, we were trying to do as much of the remodel work in, in-house as possible. So that was kind of on a different track than, than the rest of this was. So that's why we kind of have them as two different contracts at this time.
Mr. Chairman, just anybody watching or out in the audience, this is another two and three quarter million dollars.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair, didn't we just vote? At least a majority voted for NAU architecture?
Sir.
Architectural work, we just voted on that, I think, didn't we?
We did, yes. You did.
So which is the priority? All of them, right?
Well, that's kind of the place where we're at right now in regard to the needs that we have. Like, we, the county hasn't addressed needs for an extended amount of time. And we're kind of in a position now where we're trying to deal with a number of projects at the same time. If, if, if I could have it differently, I wouldn't mind having them spaced out a little bit more. Makes my life a lot easier. But we have those needs and we have to get them addressed.
Needs are all relative, aren't they? Mr. Chair, if I might, just last week, I visited earthen mound that early settlers of this country lived in. Think of the needs they had versus these needs. It's totally unreal. Totally unreal to me. If I might, Mr. Chair, if we were to clean up the mess down below that entryway... If I might, Mr. Chair, if we were to clean up the mess down below that entryway, clean that up and waterproof that landing, what would that cost?
I, I, I think that we'd probably be well over a million dollars to do that by itself.
Just to clean up, clean up the mess and, and waterproof the landing.
Well, you have to reinforce the foundation that's being eaten away.
That'd be part of cleaning up the mess and waterproof the landing, so I can't believe it got that far. It is horrible down there and there's no question about that.
So, Mr. Chair, I thank Mr. Faraby for, for making my point for me that I made earlier. Can't believe it got that far away.
It's that far because we keep saying, we'll put it off another five years, 10 years, some of them 30 years. So again, it's one piece of, he just said that's a million dollars for one piece of this. Because we never did anything about it. Because we had commissions that said, "That's quarter million." Did you hear what that said? You, you gotta do it to a point where, like we said, we had people that didn't want to for years. We had that in the city, 17 years before the water-
Mr. Chair, that's enough of the city. This is county.
Comes up.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
No, same point, same point, George. The waited 17 years to raise the water bills to the point where the, the system, we didn't have any more water for coming out of Spring Creek that we could use because DNR said no more. And then it costs the same way this courthouse and other things cost is because people politically wanted to be elected because they said, "Well, we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars."
Yeah, I'm going to object to that.
So.
I, I think it's a pretty taxing thing to say to us people. And I, I would include, George, that-
Well, you keep saying it.
Wait a minute.
Trying to do the best for taxpayers and we get criticized for it? I, I'm, I think you're out of line.
I think you just did that to us. What's the difference, Buskrud? You, you're saying to us that it's not needed. So we're trying to say, and I'm trying to say a point, when you say, when you do nothing, nothing happens except costing people longer. So we're saying the same thing you are, just in a different way.
I think we've had enough discussion about, with the previous issue and this issue in terms of the generalities and practicalities and the politics. So is there anyone who wishes to make a motion relative to this issue?
Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize the chair's signature to the AIA document B-105-2007 Standard Form of Agreement between Owner and Architect dated July 5th, 2016, between Pennington County and Fennel Design for professional services related to the design and construction of the project identified as the Pennington County Court's addition for a lump sum fee of $222,000 plus reimbursable expenses estimated to be $4,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Substitute motion, delay this matter until January 2017.
Here we have substitute motion. Is there a second? Time's for lack of a second, back to the original motion. Roll call, vote.
Buskrud?
No.
No. Faraby?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item, item 16.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Wilsie, Pankin County Highway Department.
Morning.
Item 16 is authorization to purchase two 2016 John Deere 772 GP motor graders off the Minnesota State bid. Pankin County Highway Department is requesting authorization to purchase two motor grader off the Minnesota State bid. This bid was awarded to RDO Equipment Company. I attached the bid documents as, as accepted by the state of Minnesota. Minnesota County, or Pankin County has four machines coming out of warranty on September 30th of 2016. We originally were thinking of replacing all four, but after prioritizing the needs of the Highway Department and looking at our budgets, we decided to only purchase two motor graders. Initial cost of these motor graders will be for a total of around $592,204. We can then sell the two motor graders, the 2009 motor graders, either at auction or trade them in. We have a guaranteed price for trade-in from RDO, and this is, has changed this morning that I, from what I had, not, one of them will be for $110,000 and the other one will be for $114,000 for these two motor graders. So it would result in a net price for motor graders for $368,204. It's a difference of $12,000 total. I attached a worksheet that RDO supplied for us for all four motor graders. We will remove from the existing motor graders the front scarifier, rear ripper, and wing plow mounts, so we can reuse, reuse them. This will save us approximately $26,500 per unit. I am requi- Pennington County Highway Department is requesting two motions. First motion is to authorize the Highway Department to purchase these two 2016 John Deere 772 GP motor graders off the Minnesota State bid for the price of $296,102 each. The second motion, if with approval of the first motion, I'm requesting a motion to declare for surplus the trade-in or sale of the two 2009 John Deere motor graders, serial numbers 626-299 and 626-262. Any questions, please?
How many hours those two machines have?
The, one machine has 57, 5,760 hours. The other one has 5,257 hours.
Where are those two machines currently located?
Right now, one is in Hill City and one is in New Underwood. I have chosen these two motor graders because of the warranty work that has been done on them. One of them has had $139,800 warranty work in seven years' time. The other one has had $51,000 worth of warranty work.
When are the warranties done?
They are done September 30th of this year.
So if you, if you don't have the warranty anymore, how much more does that cost you per year? I mean-
Take these numbers, divide them by seven, that would be my guess, it'd be right in that neighborhood. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't do the math.
Okay. And you have them in your budget, sir?
These, I have more than this in my budget, but with prioritizing all of our work, yes, I've got this covered.
Thank you.
What's our, our vehicle number on that 5,700? The Hill, Hill City one, I presume, was the 56, 5,700 hour vehicle, right?
I beg your pardon? Which one?
The 5,700 hour vehicle, that's probably the Hill City one.
That would be the Hill City one.
And that's also 390, our county number is 390 on it?
That is county number 929, is what it is.
390 isn't the high one, then.
I'm part, I'm, sorry, I'm not following you. Thank you.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. You say the initial cost for these motor graders will be $592,000. Is that for both of them?
That's for both of them, yes.
And then you say, now, we have a guaranteed price of, what, $110, $114 now?
Yes, that is correct.
$124, so we're down to $368, right?
Yes, $368,204.
Okay, well, why is the motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase for the price of $296,000 each?
That is for the original purchase so that I can sell them or trade the others in. I am looking at selling the other ones on, on Iron Planet. I'm hoping to get better money that way. If I don't sell it, then the trade-in, with the trade-in, it would be 368. I am waiting for back-
For both, 368 for both of them?
Yes. What I am doing is I'm waiting for an answer back from Iron Planet as to whether they can match this dollar or not. That is why I'm, I've got it separated.
So you want us to authorize 296 to buy both of them without a trade-in? Or, or without a sale?
Without salvage. Salvage value.
I'm-
You're looking, you're looking to maximize the salvage values.
I am trying to maximize salvage, best for the county.
As opposed to keep them for 10 years?
This is, this, I want to purchase the two and then I will, I am trying to get dollars, find out what is cheapest, I mean, what gives us the best bang for our buck on the sale.
Mr. Chair, waiting one more year is going to, going to do what, other than extend or take the warranty away?
It will also decrease the trade-in value significantly. This has changed $12,000 in four months. We keep waiting, it will drop and drop and drop. Right now, I can get the best money, I feel, for the, these graders in trade-in or sale.
And you wanted for-
Mr. Chair, obviously somebody sees considerable value in these two, two machines.
They see some value, yes.
Considerable value, we're talking 100, 12,000 divided by 120, into 120,000 like 10 times. Anyway, I guess enough said, let's vote.
So, Tom, also, you talked about you were going to do four, but you prioritized. So I think it was pretty apparent prioritizing says that you had two more that you could have, but at this point, even with the warranties going, it still didn't have the work that these other ones had. Plus, next year, you probably have four more coming, coming up. So I thank you for prioritizing at least the two that you needed right away out of, out of four.
The, actually, next year I have six more that are coming out of warranty.
Okay.
So I will have over half of my fleet out of warranty.
And based on those numbers, they didn't have the work that these two had on them.
The other two of these four had a lot less work. One of them was 12,000, one was 15,000.
Where that, just like a vehicle, you could get a lot more-
Yes.
-roadwork out of them. Out of these two, you're doing some, starting to get some considerable non-cost savings out of them. So I appreciate the meeting with me, Tom, and showing me those numbers and made a difference. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize the Highway Department to purchase two 2016 John Deere 772 GP motor graders from the Minnesota State bid for the price of $296,102 each.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call, vote.
Faraby?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Second motion.
My motion was to request the authorization to declare, blah, sorry. We are requesting a motion to declare surplus, trade-in or sale of those two 2009 John Deere 772 GP motor graders, serial numbers 626-299 and 626-262.
Be my motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
So you, you'll make the call as to whether it goes to surplus or, or-
I am, I'm awaiting some callback from Iron Planet right now, and I'm also talking to Purple, I can't remember what they're called.
We are leaving you with the call.
They're going to give me a call to find out which one, if they can match or improve on these numbers. If they do not, I am going to go with the $110 and $114,000, if they can't beat it.
Mr. Chair, if, if we vote for this motion, then, then the call as to which way to go is yours.
That's what I'm requesting, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Buskrud?
Yes.
Faraby?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
4 to 1.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
17.
I think, well, Commissioner Buskrud was going, he bought three motor graders or-
Two.
Two.
All needed.
Good afternoon, Nick Stroud, HR Director for Pennington County, and here representing the Compensation Committee as the chair. What you have before you is a creation of a new position in our Highway Department, and this is an engineering technician. This was brought before the Compensation Committee on May 12th and was voted unanimously. You have the memo in your packet, but what this, and I've been working with Tom Wilsie from the Highway Department on this position, but what we're looking to do is take some work from two halftime FTEs that are, there are summer interns, they're intern opportunities, so they're not long-term viable positions, they're volatile, fluctuating positions. And we're looking to take those and create a, an engineering technician. Now, this would not be a full-blown professional engineer like we have at the top of our scale, but maybe this would be a mid-scale technician that would assist the surveyor and the engineers with their CAD work, drafting, right-of-way work, things that you don't need to be a professional engineer to do, but you need to have an engineering background and education to perform. As Mr. Wilsie laid out, that we have summer duties outlined, we have winter duties outlined. And so this wouldn't be, this would not come with an additional request for an FTE. This would just be a new position on our scale at a grade 15. And we both feel that that's an appropriate placement on the scale. And so this person would allow us to do two things. One, we don't want our highly compensated, full professional engineers doing CAD work or that type of field work because they need to focus on the items that we hire them for, the higher-level items. And two, we're, we're having trouble keeping interns for longer than six months, a year, two years tops. And so we're losing that continuity that we have with a full-time employee. So with that, I can answer any questions from a compensation standpoint. I know Tom's still here, so he can answer for any highway questions that you might have. And so I'll leave it with that.
Any questions for Nick?
Mr. Chair, I've got a problem with, I guess, language. Compensation Committee and, and deciding staffing issues doesn't compute for me. So what's the Compensation Committee doing, this is a staffing issue?
The Compensation Committee's role in this is to, one thing that KJ and I had a frustration with when I started six, seven years ago, was the amount of positions that we had and there was no control over what positions we had in this county and what people were calling their positions. So in that aspect, anytime someone wants to add a position, a full-time position like this, they have to go through the Compensation Committee to make sure that it's officially, that it's appropriately graded and that it's officially recognized on the wage scale. So one of the things we've done is we've not let people hire for a position and then just fundamentally change it, call it whatever they want. When you hire for a specific position, those, that's the control that we try to have over the process. Now, how it ended up in the Compensation Committee three or four years ago, and four years ago when this was created, these, that was the type of issues, anything doing with the wage scale or the grade listing was given to the Compensation Committee. One of the things we ensured that is there's a permanent, the HR Director is the permanent member of that committee, so they're never going to be without HR representation, as well as the payroll specialist as designated by the auditor is a permanent member of that committee. So nothing, no matter who changes in our seats, that representation's always going to be there.
Is there a representation from our board on there?
Right, Commissioner Buskrud serves on that committee. these, that was the type of issues, anything doing with the wage scale or the grade listing was given to the Compensation Committee. One of the things we ensured that is there's a permanent, the HR Director is the permanent member of that committee. So they're never going to be without HR representation. As well as the payroll specialist, as designated by the auditor, is a permanent member of that committee. So nothing, no matter who changes in our seats, that representation's always going to be there.
Is there a representation from our board on there?
Correct. Commissioner Buskrud serves on that committee. And that's a permanent position as long as, as well as the sheriff, representing half of the employees. So, um, if, if that's something that the board doesn't want to go through the Compensation Committee, I would feel that it should definitely go through HR. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, um, just people creating positions and putting them anywhere on the scale.
I think, uh.
Backwards.
Committees are good. Their recommendations to this board, there's not something that we have to do. So anything that recommends or, uh, can, uh, go through with a commissioner to kind of see those issues and, and that commissioner come forward and, and talk about it, what was in that committee. Again, it's a recommendation, it's not something we have to do in the first place. So I think it's good.
We're not a board, we don't have any spending authority.
Right.
We don't have any.
And I like to know and go again to the people and ask them, the different people, how it works and, and why they came up to, or came up with the, um, recommendation. So I think it's a good thing. The second part is, how much were the two half-timers compared to the one FTE plus benefits? What was the amounts? Do you know that?
I do not know. I don't have that information. I don't know if Tom has that information or not. Uh, the, the halftime FTEs wouldn't have been benefited positions.
Right.
They'd have been seasonal. Go ahead.
Saying what I was gonna say, the half-timers are not benefited, that's the main cost to this. Wage-wise, it's a little higher than what we paid our interns. So it's going to be a little bit higher than what we paid before.
For me, it's, it's hard to see without the numbers, I guess, Tom, of the cost savings or the, how much it's gonna cost difference. So is it something we have to make a decision on today, or does somebody know those numbers?
I don't know the numbers, but I can get them for you. We can delay this if you wish to.
Well, the salaries are going, the, the two people in salaries are going to make more than this position in just salary. But when you add the benefits, this position will be more.
Right. I just, I guess I'd like to see those differences. Just, not that I don't trust the compensation, which I appreciate, but I would like to just see the, the difference.
And what we would have to do though is the, that's fine, we can do that. Uh, those, uh, FTEs, those summer interns, the longer they're here, the more they're going to make. So that is a fluctuating expense.
Is there any way you can start it in twenty seventeen, or is there, 'cause you have the interns already?
My interns that I have, I have one intern currently, and he will be leaving when school starts.
Okay. So we have time to look at the numbers and?
Yes. My intent is to hire later this year, September, October. What I am hoping to do is catch somebody that's getting laid off, that has some experience, so that I can gain from that experience.
Well, Commissioner Buskrud, do you have any opinion on your board?
Oh, yes, I have opinion.
I knew you did.
We worry about the hundreds of dollars and don't care about the millions. But, uh, I, at the time, I, I voted in favor of this. I think, uh, he probably needs it. And, uh, you know, it, the price difference between two interns and, and a full-time is probably negligible. I mean, if you ask a few thousand dollars, there's no doubt about that. It's gonna be more.
Right. And it's well-needed. That's the bottom line.
I, according to him.
The, the biggest benefit for the full-time employee is we lose our interns after one, maybe two years. I'm hoping to keep somebody so that once we get them trained, we can keep them.
We're not talking fifty thousand dollar difference, we're talking?
No.
Okay.
No.
And, and just in the salary, like, two, we would start an intern at approx, and I'm just approximately twelve dollars an hour. And this position will start at eighteen dollars an hour. So the two, in terms of dollars, those two interns would make approximately twenty-four dollars an hour. Or this person would make nineteen dollars an hour. However, when you add benefits on top of that, then there is going to be a cost difference, and it is going to be more with a full-time person. But we can bring those numbers back to you.
And I figure, um, based on common sense, that would be, but I didn't know if it was like fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, then come back and go, okay, we didn't.
If you put me on the spot, I had to guess less than ten thousand dollars. But we can definitely bring those numbers back, concrete.
And for me, uh, at this point, you don't have to bring them back. If the board decides that because of the numbers you've just told me, and then I will check with you anyway afterwards.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to postpone this till next meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything further?
I'll make a motion to create a new position in the Highway Department Engineer Technician in Grade Fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Hi, Dan Richard. Uh, I'd just like to point out, uh, the last couple of weeks, and I don't know if this is what you guys intended or not, but your, your position requests have been coming pretty steady. And, and I'm thinking back five and a half years or so on a, it seems to me like this county is, in five and a half years, has hired ten or twelve new positions that it didn't have. And at what point do we stop hiring new positions? You know, the more, the more money you spend, the more people you gotta have, the more government you get. Next thing you know, you're, you're up to here like the federal government is. Thanks.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Item eighteen. Morning.
Is that mine? I didn't look at you.
Yes, it's you. It's you.
You just got up here 'cause you wanted to.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, afternoon. Denny Gordon, Pennington County Fire Administrator. Just a quick, brief refresher update, uh, although we're past the Fourth of July. I'm sure you've had phone calls from people. Just remember, um, county commissioners only have the authority to prohibit fireworks between June twentieth and July second, and only when the fire danger, grasslands fire danger is in the extreme. Should it fall below extreme, then that, uh, ban, uh, goes away. So it's, could be an on-again, off-again thing. Uh, that's by state law.
Well, Denny, all the fireworks that you see out there is not a fire danger? You said only if there's a fire, you meant by if the, it was dry, not that the fire danger was from all those. I never understood it until a couple of years ago, I went out to Rapid Valley. I was like, the, holy cow.
You drive through with your windows up.
Yep. Well, and your car, you're going by, and there's piles in the road and piles in the yard. And if, holy, holy cow, if you don't like fireworks and you're in Rapid Valley, you're in trouble.
Yeah. Fire departments made a number of calls, well, the past couple of days for small grass fires from fireworks, as usual, so.
But we can't limit the time, like?
No.
Nope, can't do any of that.
And you can't do anything past July second.
I've had many calls from Rapid Valley, holy cow. And again, go out there the day after and you'll understand what people are saying. But I also believe in Independence Day and all, all of that, so. And bottom line is, I just asked you, state law, and I, and I read it. But I wanted to know if there's a time limit, like, can you make them stop at twelve or?
And they can, and they can shoot or discharge fireworks until the Sunday following July fourth, which means Sunday, July tenth this year.
Yeah. And I like fireworks. I went to, uh, Belfush this year, um, on the third and seen the Rapid City ones. And, uh, they, people put on some pretty awesome firework, uh, displays in Rapid City and Belfush that I've seen.
Mr. Chair, just maybe this would be a point of information for Commissioner Hagak. But we have gone to peer many times, the, the state organization of firefighters has. I mean, we just are not able to break through and get some changes made.
Approximately, a year ago, we sat down with the fireworks people. Bob Wilcox set up a meeting. And, uh, at that time, it was you bet, we're, we'll sit down again and we'll visit. And the fireworks people have never sat down to visit again, even though we've asked them. I've asked Bob Wilcox to set it up a couple of times, but anyway.
Many times, um, discussions changed direction. And, um, I know, I know the direction that the efforts, political efforts have been made in peer. And in a conversation recently, it was suggested that we change direction and lobby to have fireworks allowed only in city limits.
I like that idea.
I'll second that.
It, um, it may work.
As well, because they were shooting them last night in my blaze.
Oh, yeah, me too.
But if, if you restrict it only to city limits.
I think that actually makes more sense because they have better firefighting equipment.
I think you put it on Spring Creek Road and that's it. There's a perfect road that we could just shut down that road and put everybody on that road, don't you think, Lindell? Since he lives on that road is what we're saying. It's far enough out there. I don't think there's any humans out there. Is there, Lindell?
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, the second item I had is just, uh, the open burning, uh, with our fire danger climbing, dryness and stuff. We began a weekly conference call with state, federal, counties, uh, participating in a ten AM Tuesday morning conference call just to discuss fire, what's going on, what do we think, where are we at? So we're all kind of together. I mean, is it time to start looking at, uh, building up the restrictions? And so it's just a, it's just a conversation at this point. We're also gonna start probably not this week, next week, have a meeting with all the, we'll call them stakeholders, uh, just to make sure we're, we're assuming thing, the weather's gonna get hotter and drier as we go into, more into July and August as normal. Get a little reprieve tomorrow. Weather's supposed to be very nasty, uh, wind, rain, large hail. But then come Saturday, Sunday, we're back into the nineties and eighty temperatures.
Can we restrict the hail?
Can't do anything about it. Uh, really have, have nothing other than that, just kind of a, just a quick update on kind of what's going on. We're looking at it, watching it. Uh, the fire departments are obviously very well aware of it. And we're kind of starting to lay plans and preparations for the rally, so. That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bet, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, ten thirty. We need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move going to, uh, Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to convene as the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now convened.
I'm working on it. You're right. Uh, Item A is variant sixteen oh six to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet in a limited agriculture district. The applicant, uh, Michael and Alyssa Pogony, and the subject property is ten point zero six acres. Essentially, what the applicant is doing, as stated previously, is they would like to have, go from a twenty-five-foot setback in their zoning district to fifteen feet so that they can fit a forty-eight by thirty-foot shop on the subject property. Included in your package is a letter from the applicant dated June seventh, two thousand and sixteen, um, explaining how a hardship exists on the subject property. Let's see here, now that we've got this uploaded. This is an aerial, uh, shot of the subject property. Essentially, from this line, uh, uh, the large rectangle in the back going down drops about, I'd say roughly two hundred feet over possibly seven acres. Uh, there's, as indicated by the applicant, there's about three acres of buildable space, roughly two point two acres of buildable space by their letter, um, where they would like to put their home and their, and their shop. Currently, there are no structures on the, on the property, but as you have in your packets, there are a number of overhead power lines. The applicant has indicated in their letter that they're working with the power company to relocate those overhead power lines. And this is a photo from the approach, uh, with the variance sign and some of the overhead power lines on the property. Another picture, um, looking straight back along the fence line there on the left is approximately, from what we can gather, where the applicant would like to put their, um, shop. Uh, there are four criteria that the Commission Board to, use to determine if a variance is needed. Uh, the first is specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography or sighting exist. Staff, staff has verified through a site visit that a significant portion of the property, um, the above-mentioned seven acres, uh, appears to have steep topography, but sighting and exceptional narrowness do not exist. Item B, that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This setback variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from, uh, property zone, limited agriculture district. That due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted, uh, hardship. If granted, you would be, you would be granting a fifteen-foot setback in a zoning district that requires twenty-five. Um, there are overhead power lines, as stated earlier. However, with the overhead power lines either above or below ground, staff feels that there, that a hardship does not exist and that there's plenty of buildable area on the subject property. The next item is that the granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. At the time the staff report was, uh, written, staff received no complaints or calls of concern about this variance. Staff at nine forty this morning received one call from a neighbor who received a letter and saying that she does have concern about, um, where the proposed shop is to be located on the subject property. And the request from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet is not in harmony with the general purposes of the zoning district. So in conclusion, a hardship, uh, a hardship constituting unreasonable deprivation of use of the subject property in staff's opinion does not appear to exist. Uh, with or without the relocation of the overhead power lines, the location of the proposed shop can meet the required setback of a limited agriculture district as deemed by Pennington County. If the Board of Adjustment approves variance sixteen oh six, staff recommends three conditions be included.
Mr. Chair.
And I believe the applicant is in the audience.
The applicant is here?
I believe.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yes.
Okay. I, I do have a couple of questions and?
Come forward, please.
I'm gonna put up a new.
Good morning.
State your name.
Mike Pogony. I'm the, the property owner and the person requesting the variance.
I do have the slides you submitted. I'm gonna get those right.
Okay, thanks.
You know, I, um, this is what I was looking at, is this picture. I just absolutely do not see why you have to have it there, why you can't move it ten feet in.
The, the purpose for the, the variance request really was a couple of things. The first thing was, in order to maximize the distances between the existing structures that are on the adjacent properties, but also to utilize the actual view that we have from the property, we just felt that the layout and, and getting an additional ten feet of clearance between our house and, I'm sorry, our building and the setback, the twenty-five-foot setback, it just makes the, the layout and the flow a little bit better versus crowding that a little bit closer to the, the building.
It didn't sell me. It just doesn't look like a big deal.
So you, you have three acres of buildable land, is what you said on your letter?
No. Um, it, when you, when you evaluate the area, which was, which was, uh, stated by the county to be three acres, when you account for the setbacks, which include twenty-five foot on each side yard and an additional forty-eight feet because there's a section line on the western part of the parcel, that reduces that buildable area from three acres to approximately two point two acres.
So where, show me where the two point two acres?
It is roughly the trap, the red trapezoid that you're being shown there.
And again, well, why can't you put it and make it so it doesn't need a variance in that two acres? Tell me again.
Please repeat the question, I'm sorry.
You said in that trapezoid that that was the two acres that was buildable, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have that two acres, how come you can't pull it in so you meet that variance? Tell me again why you couldn't?
It's not to say that we can't.
Okay.
We're just trying to utilize this space in such a way that fits our intended use of the property, at the same time, still provide adequate separation between us and the property boundary. Where it's, the thing is, I guess, what I don't understand is we're, you know, in looking for the variance in the twenty-five feet, okay? And I, and I was not aware that we had a, a landowner that had voiced concern, because that's, that's new to me.
Justice's morning at 9:40, they call.
Okay. You know, I've talked with other landowners in the area. No one's expressed any concerns with it. They, they considered the building and the construction of the building to be in harmony with the area, which is effectively going to be residential storage. I guess I'm, I'm not seeing the, the significance of asking for 10 feet of setback. We could put in the 25 feet. It changes our layout design, however.
So we're asking, why is it significantly an issue that you pull it in 10 feet? How about that, except that you believe that it's in harmony with what you want?
I, I guess I'm just asking. I'm asking the Commission to consider us flexibility to be able to build a lot in the way that we see fitting to the area around there.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Where's the section line, north, south, east, west?
On the western border. The section line is the western border of the parcel.
Right down here.
Which pushes our house layout a little bit further east because we have to have our setbacks for our, our drain, septic tank and drain field.
So your survey is, we, we always have 10 feet, remember with surveys and different things. We have questionable questions on if those surveys are right. George, what are the two surveys and, and remember we were talking, or Commissioner Farabee? Because you've always brought up those concerns on those surveys.
Rapid map.
Yes, sir.
Rapid map is, is not very.
And I didn't use rapid map.
What if they're off 10 feet?
The lines are way off, yeah.
So what kind of survey did you get so you know that it's not off 10 feet?
With, with, you know, evaluating what the, the planning and zoning has allowed, if, if the Board were to consider the variance, we would have that side yard property boundary to the south surveyed to ensure that the property would be set 15 feet or greater from the property boundary, condition number one. If, if the Chair would entertain and the Commission would entertain, I guess I, I would like to add a few, a few points of observation in this analysis. So, thank you. You know, the planning and zoning has certainly been receptive and worked well with me in this process. So I greatly appreciate the time and the effort of the, of the staff. They have acknowledged that approximately seven acres of the property is relatively unbuildable. So I appreciate that as well. I do not believe that our request is in contrary to the public interest. I believe that as you guys are considering a similar request for an existing building on the next item of the agenda for a 10-foot setback, I, I don't think that constructing a, a 30 by 48 building is, is necessarily contrary to public interest. Furthermore, I guess my, my question would be, or my comment would be, I've reviewed the, the variances, the zoning ordinance, and hardship and excessive narrowness are not explicitly defined. So.
What I'm saying is your survey could do the same thing and, and your property or your, your shed or your storage could end up doing the same thing, that is, by not having a survey beforehand and us agreeing. So contrary to what you're saying, you could have the same issue again coming back.
I understand your comment, but I also state that if the Board were to consider the, the, the suggestion by the planning and zoning to approve with the contingent upon having a survey done, that we would do that. So that it would not be, it would be at the 15 feet or whatever the Board has agreed to.
It wouldn't determine the property lines beforehand. It would basically be after your approval of the variance, then this, then condition one would have to be done. So you would already have approved it.
And that's what I'm saying. And, and if, it seems more, to make more sense when you're asking for something to get the beforehand instead of come back and say, okay, then this is not going to work. We're going to have to do something else and you're going to come see us anyway.
Mr. Chair, I think what, what Commissioner Hickock is asking is to do ahead of time, well, you're not going to build until you survey. So wherever the survey shows, you want 15 feet from that point.
Is it a, let me ask the Commission a question. Is it a requirement that every building permit that's applied for in Pennington County has to have a survey provided with the building permit? Because I'm not aware of that.
That's not the issue. All the issue is, is you want us to approve it. Very, variance in the setback from a known boundary.
Correct.
And that known boundary is yet to be determined, correct?
The boundary pins are out there on the southern parcel, or the southern line of the parcel. I verified that with a field walk with my building, my builder.
Okay, that makes a difference.
So if I might, then, then you're asking the individual to get a licensed surveyor to verify those pins. Is that it? Director Conover?
That's correct.
Okay.
Per section 502 of our ordinance.
So you're just, you're wanting to double check the pins?
If you approve it.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that makes a considerable amount of difference, what you just said about having the pins. Because most people, when they come in here, they look at rapid map. They go, okay, it's good. And when you have the pins, those, those are the actual pins. I mean, you.
The aerial photography and, and the property boundaries in this particular area are very skewed, so.
Okay. I appreciate that, Michael. That's actually good information. Now I understand why staffs put that as a condition on after the fact.
Any other questions or comments?
And Mr. Chair, I'd always like to have the, the condition that, that if, if a second survey or a subsequent survey 10 years later reveals that that's not where the boundary is, then the county not having a liability in approving the, the setback. The surveys are not, aren't always the same. Thank you.
How are you? My name's Michael Euler. And I've been listening since I've been here about following the rules and why rules have been written and follow them. The building's not built. There's a 25-foot setback. Did the Commission not set those rules? There's a, there's a reason for that, isn't there?
Right.
I don't know this gentleman. I don't want to cause him any harm. And I know the next, next part of this agenda is going to affect somebody that I respect dearly. You have cast the rules, which has caused me grief and some of the things I'm doing. I think that you need to follow the rules. Is that not true? Or you spent a lot of, you wasted a lot of taxpayers' dollars for you guys sitting up here making rules?
But second part is, sir, the rule is you can get a variance based on hardship and other things.
There's a lot of property up there for that building.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not saying you're wrong in that. I'm just saying, the other rule, sir, is a variance and we have those for exceptions if we need them. But it doesn't mean that we are going to approve this just because he asked for a variance.
I didn't say you work. I just, I just wanted to close your business because I got to get back to work because the, the taxpayers are paying my salary and I need to get back there to do my job. But what I, what I heard when I first walked in here was the need to follow rules and do the right thing.
Right.
That was the first thing I heard when I walked into this room.
So you don't think a variance is doing the right thing if we approve it?
I just said, just do the right thing.
Well, the right thing to you might not be the same right thing to people based on that variance rule. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. And I know you, Michael, so.
I know you don't mean.
I appreciate you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, did you have something you wanted to say? Come forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Maureen Schlichty. I am the homeowner that called this morning. Good morning, Chair, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And I got the letter, I picked it up from the post office Thursday afternoon and read the letter and really didn't completely understand. I didn't know anything about this. And drove down our road and tried to find out where this land was and looked at the sign and there was a number to call. And I called with the holiday weekend this morning. So we live the Carty Flat Road District and we have covenants. And I can just read those covenants. I was informed by the Building and Planning Zoning this morning that they do not have to follow any covenants. The county does not. But I can still read you the covenants that we have. Setback requirements. No structure of any kind may be located on any lot less than 50 feet from front, from any front lot line nor less than 50 feet from any side or rear lot line. No barn may be located on any lot less than 100 feet from all lot lines. However, it is recommended that special consideration be given to locating all structures as far from all lot lines as suitable and practical. And I'm, I, I talked to a neighbor this morning who got the letter also, who's in the process of moving and and I talked to my husband. Other than that, I haven't talked to other neighbors. But these are the covenants that we follow to the best of our ability. And I'd be happy to talk with the gentleman and I don't know who else he's spoken to to try to determine a reasonable solution. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, what's your wish?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to deny the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for denial. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, make a substitute motion to postpone this until next meeting or until such time as the lady that just spoke. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. But if, if the neighborhood come, come back to us with a, with a suggestion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, a substitute motion and a second. Any discussion on the substitute motion?
However, I believe it was 50 feet. So.
And 100 for some others.
Yeah. So, so that, theirs, there is much more restrictive than ours.
She also said that maybe they could visit and come to a solution. So I don't know if she's saying put it there. She's saying she'd like solution. Maybe that's talking with them and then maybe there's going to be no solution. But at this point, it seems hard for me to vote for it. And if they could find a solution with the neighborhood, I think that for me, that makes a difference. So I agree with George, just kind of looking at the situation.
We are not to deal with their, I mean, we as a county cannot do anything based on covenants within.
Yes.
For this.
I know that, but I, I.
So in the end, we would still, you, what, what's going to happen is you're going to have to at least do 25 if you want to stay with the covenants. Is, is that what you're getting?
Yes.
Okay. So then you wouldn't be coming back to us even though you spent the money to do it?
Well, the bottom line is, is I think if you have, if you can find solutions, instead of her saying, this is the covenants, but we don't enforce it, but we're saying, okay, maybe he can find a different, different off, option. Maybe he can listen to what we are saying and maybe understand that it might not go through the way he wants to do it and he can find some solution a different way. Okay.
Okay, we have, we have a substitute motion.
Stand.
Can I?
Yes, you may come in.
I, I guess in, in light of the fact that, you know, I took today off to do this and I was supposed to be here at 10:30 and it's now 12:30, I, I would prefer that I withdraw the, the motion for the variance because I don't have any more time to, to argue the point. I, my, my request was genuine. I, I sought to seek a variance, but I cannot continue to another meeting. I have to move forward with my plans to get my house built. So I don't know how we can do that with the county, but I, I, I don't have any more time to sit and, and, and sit idle for this request. So thank you.
Thank you.
If you were to do that, we'd recommend that you refund the monies not spent for advertising fees.
Okay.
So our motion, Mr. Chair, is to continue it. So to get us out of our mire of motions here, would we just withdraw all motions? And then he would request to withdraw? And we would make a motion that would refund those monies?
A portion of the money, if you want to.
There can be another substitute motion. I probably shouldn't be making it. The substitute motion we'd be to, to withdraw is.
Well, he has to withdraw. We can't withdraw it.
He just said he did.
He's asked us to, so I'd make the motion, but I probably shouldn't.
Well, what he's saying is you need four votes up here to get a variance. You've got one there and one there that's not going and me maybe. So I'm just saying you need four votes. So he's going to withdraw.
Just, just hold it, hold it. Karen, you are shaking your head.
No, I'm just, no. Mr. Chair.
I mean, we're.
I'll make a second substitute motion to honor the, the applicant's request to withdraw his variance request.
Mr. Chair, we cannot make substitute, substitute motion upon substitute motion. Cleaning it up is just to withdraw the motion that you made. And we get all the way out of those motions and cleanly come forward with the motion to accept his.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, second has been withdrawn from the substitute motion. Is there anything further on the substitute motion?
So it will die for lack of a second.
It does not have a second, so that moves us back to the original motion.
To deny, which I will withdraw.
And that's been withdrawn. So now the playing field is clear. What do you want to do? And, and Mr. Pogony has declared his position on the matter, so.
I move that we honor the applicant's request to withdraw his application for variance.
With the fee?
With fees refunded?
Oh, with, with his, yeah, with his fees being refunded.
Except for advertising.
We had to pay for advertising.
Second.
The county had to pay.
Is that yours, except for the advertising?
That's fine. That's fine.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everyone clear on the motion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item B.
Okay. Good afternoon. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item B is variance request 1607. This is a request to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet in order to bring an existing barn into compliance. The applicant is Beth Schuster. I believe she is in the audience today. As this property exists today, it is zone limited agriculture district. It is currently 4.5 acres. However, the lot size is legal nonconforming as the plat for this property was filed in 1977. Access to this property is off of Naughty Pine Court, which is located within the Naughty Pine Road District. As it exists today, this property has a single-family residence and a 10 by 30 barn. The barn is located over here, kind of under this tree, so you can't really see it from the aerial view over here. But basically, the way that this came about is in October of last year, staff received a complaint regarding a structure on the subject property that did not appear to meet setback requirements. The ordinance officer went out there, verified that it did not appear, that this did meet setback requirements. And staff also did find that a building permit was not obtained for this structure prior to its construction. We spoke with the applicant in November of last year. On November 5th, she did apply for a building permit for the existing barn. And if, if this variance is approved, the building permit can then be approved as well. And then on May 27th of 2016, the applicant applied for this setback variance. Staff has performed a site visit and verified that this structure is on the property. It does appear to be less than a 25-foot setback. The applicant has submitted a site plan showing that it is 10 feet from the property line. So in terms of the criteria for the variance request, criteria number one, that specific circumstances or conditions exist. Staff again has verified through a site visit that the barn does exist on the subject property. Item number two, that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This setback variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from properties zoned as limited agriculture district. Condition, or criteria number three, that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. If there is strict application of the zoning ordinance, the applicant would be required to move the existing barn to a location on the property that meets the required setbacks or remove the barn. The applicant has indicated that the barn was actually built on the subject property sometime around 2000 and that moving it would be quite difficult according to the applicant. And then the fourth criteria is that granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting this variance does not appear to be contrary to public interest. Staff has spoken with one neighboring property owner, but that is the only property owner that we have spoken with regarding this. But it would allow for a 10-foot side yard setback in a limited agriculture district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. If the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1607, staff recommends two conditions be included.
You said limited egg is not this property or this barn's not in harmony with it?
It's not right now. That's why she's getting a variance. It's not in compliance with the zoning ordinance for limited agriculture district because it doesn't meet the 25-foot setback. setback.
Okay, I thought you meant that the barm was not...
No, the barn is fine. Where the barn is, is not fine.
And I don't know if I need to ask you, you this, or the property owner, did, did she own the property when this was built? And what was the fees, because don't you have to pay for a permit and then a...
Yes.
Another, what was the total cost of her, without this variance for her permits and her late fees, or however we say those?
On, upon her building permit submitted, she did pay the regular building permit fee, off the top of my head, I can't remember what that was, and she did pay a penalty fee on that as well, a doubled application fee on the variance, she did pay the regular application fee, the doubled application fee, and the penalty fee.
Okay.
I did, I would have, I never, I never knew, when I, when the guy built it for me 16 years ago, I asked him if I needed to permit, and I asked him what the easement was, and that's what he gave me. So I never would have done it, I mean, I would have done what needed to be done, so...
Identify yourself, please.
Beth Schuster, I'm sorry, I'm the property owner.
Yeah.
That's all right.
Any other questions or comments?
At this point, you'd know if that survey was right, because the rest of your property owners would come, had you take that barn down by now, wouldn't they have?
16 years. 16 years it's been sitting there.
Mr. Chair, I don't see how we can make her move this barn. It, I remember one time we did make people move part of a storage shed because it was out in the right of way and blocking the, the line of sight, but this isn't doing that.
I'm going to move approval of the variance.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Sorry.
Okay.
Make a motion to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Consent calendar.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C, second reading of rezone 1605 and comprehensive plan amendment 1605 for Raymond and Shirley Darrell, Fisk Land Serving as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item D, minor plat 1610 and subdivision regulations variance 1602 for Donald Brassfield, Renner and Associates is the agent, and approval is recommended. And item E, first reading and public hearing of planned unit development 1603 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, and the recommendation is to be continued to the July 19th, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Read my motion. Or do I have to make one?
Motion is what?
Good.
I'll second that motion, approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
No, no one wanted to pull any items, right?
We, maybe. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda before we vote on approval? If not, we do have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item F.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to take a quick five-minute recess if we could, please. Maybe reconvene again at 1 o'clock.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're in recess.
...for Spring Creek Hideaway, Brent and Pam Behring. I'm going to do my best to explain why this is back in front of you, so it is going to take a little bit of history. So on April 25th of 2016, the Planning Commission denied conditional use permit 1605. The applicant then appealed the Planning Commission's decision, and that was then heard by this body on May 17th of 2016. On that day, the Board of Commissioners voted to overturn the April 25th decision of the Planning Commission and approved conditional use permit 1605 with 18 conditions. On June 13th, in accordance with condition number 17, which stated that this conditional use permit be reviewed at the June 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting to verify that all conditions of approval are being met and a vacation home license has been issued by the South Dakota Department of Health. So because of that condition, it was brought back before the Planning Commission on June 13th of 2016. So by a unanimous vote, the Planning Commission again denied conditional use permit review 1605 with the following motions. It was originally moved to deny the conditional use permit as portions of the property are located in the floodway slash floodplain. There was then a substitute motion which was to deny conditional use permit 1605 as portions of the single-family residence are located in the floodway slash floodplain. This was approved unanimously. So after the June 13th meeting, staff spoke with the State's Attorney's Office regarding their denial of the conditional use permit. Staff was advised at that time that based upon the Board of Commissioners' approval of conditional use permit 1605 on May 17th, the item was remanded back to the Planning Commission due to condition number 17. Based on condition number 17, the responsibility of the Planning Commission on June 13th was solely to verify that all conditions of approval are being met and a vacation home license has been issued by the South Dakota Department of Health. So because their sole purpose at the June 13th meeting was only to verify, not to approve or deny the conditional use permit again, it was brought back before the Planning Commission on June 27th. On the June 27th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission was given the option by the State's Attorney's Office to rescind their June 13th denial of conditional use permit 1605, based on the fact that their sole responsibility at that time was to verify that the conditions of approval were met. The Planning Commission refused to rescind their June 13th motion for denial. The Planning Commission was also given the option to verify that the conditions of approval have been met, and the Planning Commission refused to verify that the conditions are met. Instead, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to send this item back to the Board of Commissioners for reconsideration with a recommendation for denial. Minutes, draft minutes from the June 27th Planning Commission meeting show the following motions. First, it was moved to continue conditional use permit review 1605 to the July 11th Planning Commission meeting in order for the State's Attorney's Office to address the concerns of the Planning Commission and research options. The substitute motion was then to send conditional use permit 1605 back to the Board of Commissioners for reconsideration with a recommendation of denial. That motion carried six to zero. So staff has been out there and performed a site visit on June 25th of 2016, and as you can see listed in your staff report, I'll save everyone time going through and reading all of them, all of those conditions have been met, staff did verify it. So what staff is asking the Board of Commissioners to do today is to amend, and Jay, you might have to help me make sure that I get this right, to amend the previous approval of conditional use permit 1605 in order to correct condition number 17 to state that this conditional use permit be reviewed in one year on a complaint basis or as directed by the Pennington County Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners to verify that all conditions of approval are being met. If you have any questions, the applicant is in the audience today.
So, Mr. Chair, so the Planning and Zoning Commission is concerned about floodway?
Yes.
Can I get a better understanding of that, because it seemed like...
Yes.
Okay.
Let me try to pull, I'm going to, I apologize, I thought I put that picture in my presentation, and I did not. So let me pull up Rapid Map here, and I'll show you where the floodplain and floodway exist on this property that they're concerned with. I did, when I was out there on June 25th, I took several pictures relevant to where the creek is and, and where the house is, so hopefully between Rapid Map and this, we can, we can establish what their concern is.
Who, who was the commissioner on the board that...
You.
So maybe, can you help me to understand just how it became more of a, an issue for them than I guess it did us? What was the feeling on that?
Well, most, most of the conversations, I recall, was a matter of, it appeared to them that we were trying to dictate what they should think, and they, they said, no.
I never would have thought of that, honestly.
If you look up there, Nancy, to the corner, that little blue corner on that L-shaped property, that's in either the floodway and the rest is floodplain.
The red is floodway, the blue is floodplain, and this is the house as it exists.
Right.
Most of the house is in the floodplain, except for that corner. So the property's not in the floodway, just that corner.
So, see, I'm just trying to get a handle on what they wanted done. Did they want part of the house removed? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what their vote was accomplishing. I, I don't get that.
I think I was on, when this originally was there, I think I was part of it, and what, that was my argument, I guess it's theirs. I don't want any part of being, having a vote that places 10 or 15 people in the floodway.
So that's what I needed to hear, I needed to get that in my head. Okay.
I mean, it's nothing to do with the house, it's something to do with the usage of it. I, we wouldn't even let them build that house there now, would we? Not that part of it.
They would have to get floodplain development permits and things along those lines, prove that it's above the base flood elevation, those types of things.
Because sometimes they, FEMA's wrong.
Well, and...
Without sounding me.
Cassie, is there a way that they can put some berms in there or something to protect that area?
Well, it would be possible, let me try to show you some of the pictures too, that might show the house in, in relation to where the creek is at. So this is looking down at the creek from their back deck, the creek is, is down here. Again, from their back deck. We get to, this is a picture taken up the hill from the edge of the creek bank, looking at the back of, of the house. And I, the, one of the Planning Commission's concern as well was the creek as it goes under the, the driveway. So these are pictures that I took from the top of the driveway looking down on the creek.
It's got culverts and...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
My point would be, why would you even build in there if there was an issue with your family or somebody else's?
You can see the, the culverts right here, there's two of them.
It was built when, again?
The house was originally built in 1972, I believe, if I remember correctly, in the 70s.
Okay.
And there is 18 conditions on there, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Jeff Swett, Costello Porter Law Firm, I represent Brent and Pam Behring. They are here in the audience today, but they wanted me to just address a couple of issues with the Commissioners. The first one is, and nothing's changed since this last conditional use permit was, it's been approved already by the Commission a little over a month, month ago. Nothing's changed, except for the fact that staff has verified that all the conditions are being complied with. And also, my clients wanted me to mention that, you know, they continue to expend more funds based on the conditional use permit being approved, and so they're acting based off of, you know, the approval of the conditional use permit in the past. I did bring the pictures again that I passed out last night. It shows the, you know, the great distance between the creek bed and the house, and then the difference in, in elevation, and if I remember right, it's a little over 10 feet from the creek bed to the corner of the house, the difference in, in elevation. The other thing I want to mention is, I guess, and maybe the State's Attorney can speak to this, I question whether this is even properly before the Commission. The question for the Planning Commission was whether these conditions were being complied with, and they failed to address that, and instead sent it back to the Commission. They didn't find that, you know, none of the, or if they're, they didn't find that a condition wasn't being complied with, they're all being complied with, according to the staff's report. And so I question whether this is even a proper motion to be before the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office, I would agree with that assessment. Frankly, the Planning Commission acted outside its bounds. The matter came before this body to either agree with the Planning Commission's rejection of the application or to overrule it. You overruled it, you looked at all of these issues, you overruled it, you sent it back, much like the Supreme Court would send back to a circuit court. You're not going to change our decision, but we have one point of clarification. In this case, apples to apples would be, your point of clarification was only to hear if the conditions have been met, not to readdress the merits of the case from the start. So I would have to agree that procedurally, on the appeal that this is, I, I don't think it really is properly back before you, certainly in the posture that it's being presented to you. Also raises a second issue of if you were to go down that road and consider rescinding your prior decision, at a, at a bare minimum, Roberts Rules of Order strongly discourages that when there's been reliance upon the original motion, which I can understand there would be, and we've just now heard there actually is.
And I read that, Jay, so I didn't, I didn't get that, just because, again, we made that point today, they're recommending body, and then when they recommend to us, our decision is final, and then they come forward, and then, kind of like you said, it seems common sense that, I, I guess I didn't get why you had to take it back to them.
A circuit court might disagree being overruled by the Supreme Court, but you live with it, and you follow their direction, that's the world we live in.
Right.
In this case, you're the Supreme Court, you overrule them and ask them for one point of clarification, not to retry the merits of the case.
So we don't, we're not...
I'm going to make a motion then, to send it back to the Planning Commission to verify that all conditions of approval are being met, they haven't done that yet.
They have.
And that's what we told them they had to do.
I would like to address that, my, my clients would prefer not to have to go back in front of the Planning Commission.
Of course, of course they would.
Because of what's happened in the past, they're afraid that they're going to be right back in front of the Commissioners when they...
Well, I think, I think we're going to have the State's Attorney there to say they have to, they have to either verify it or not verify it.
And, and that's part of the, the request by the Planning Commission is to, you can amend a decision previously made, but the amendment here is not to disprove the CUP, it's to still grant it, stick with your original, but change that number 17 to just be a review on a complaint basis, which is the standard condition that goes in these. And frankly, today, you've heard from your planning department that even though the Planning Commission didn't want to admit that the conditions have been met, they have. And so I think you can take their word on it, amend that condition to be a review in the future on a complaint basis and be done with this issue.
That'd be my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are you okay with the motion, Karen?
No.
No, let's, let's make sure we, we got this right.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, it says it at the, the end about, it's basically about 17, and that it's a one-year review.
Why, why don't you just read, read the motion so that we have it verified? Karen shouldn't have to refer to the planning and zoning thing out there.
We're saying we approve. Cassie, help me out. I know what I'm saying, but go ahead, you don't say it better.
What staff is asking is to amend your previous approval of conditional use permit 1605 in order to amend condition number 17 to state that this conditional use permit be reviewed in one year on a complaint basis or as directed by the Pennington County Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners to verify that all conditions of approval are being met.
Is that okay with a second?
And it would be to continue to be met, they're, they're being, they're met now, basically.
Correct, yes, they are met now.
So the operative word should be continue. So the operative word should be continue to be met.
The way that this is worded is just the very standard way that we word it, but if you would like it to say something different, then
No, to me, this is an abnormal case, and the planning commission didn't do what we directed them to do. They ducked. So I think we can overrule that part. I think we have confidence that there's been verification, the other conditions have been met.
Yes.
So, so let's say it to continue to be met.
That'd be fine, George. We're good with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie.
Wait until Karen's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 20.
Commissioners, this is just the time for budget discussion. If the board so wishes to give any direction or ask any additional questions, that we can find out that information for you. Provisional will need to be approved by the end of this month. So if you'd like any changes between now and the next presentation at the, I think, 21st might be our next meeting, now's the time to do so. 19th, yeah, whatever our meeting date is, I'm sorry. June was 21st. We meant June 21st, not July, July 19th.
I was trying to get that in my head and going, ah, what day is today?
It was my math.
The question, on the 2% increase, did anybody else, because didn't we, didn't have a growth, no 2% increase, we were at zero this year?
Correct, CPI is set at 0%, yes.
So everybody else didn't get that 2% COLA as well? Am I correct?
The motion that the board made for 0% still stands.
Okay.
However, it's easier for Auditor Pearson to put that number in at the front end so you could see what it is, rather than add it later. So it still stands at 0% for any cost of living or wage scale adjustments.
So if we took out the 578-580 plus the merits, 180-777, what is, anybody got a calculator?
How do we do that? In, there's two different figures for merits that I have found. One is in Julie's letter, it was like 480, 25,000. And in the budget, it was 180,000.
Yes, sir.
What is it?
I don't have the letter. Do you have it there?
Because the 180 sum comes from general fund amount only. But that doesn't make sense for a total of 480-something for total merit. But I know what number you're looking at from the general fund merit.
And people knew that there was 0% this year, right? And we still put the 2% in, meaning
In her letter, or her memo, or whatever it is, of April 12th, budget goals. Or the merit step of 1.25%. The merit step plus matching is estimated at 425,000, which includes 261 from the board general fund.
That makes sense.
So then you go back here into budgets.
It's 180.
And on the second page of the budget summary, it is totally increase of 2% is 578. One step raise, which I assumed was a merit, but maybe is 180,000.
I think she figured that out on a six-month or 12-month.
I'm sure she probably did, because merit usually goes, COLA goes into effect usually in January, and so she probably did the
Maybe she only figured half a year of
Six months, July is when eligibility for most people.
That was only half a year, I would do.
180 some.
Well, I'm not, I'd sure like to cut down some employees' numbers, but
Well, I'll just, if I might interrupt, I can register deeds, I might vote for that one, and we already voted for the half for extension. The rest of them, I got to vote against, if that helps you any.
Well, I'm just looking at, are we doing COLA? Are we not doing COLA? Are we doing merits? Are we not doing merit? The merits, I can tell you up straight, I'm not voting for the merits. COLA, I would like a reasonable reason why, if we have 0% growth on CPI, that we should do the 2%. And when's the last, do we always give cost of living? And we have, we have
We have. Historically, I remember one year that no COLA was done, and one year that we implemented, and last year we implemented, so there really was no COLA. But overall, yes.
Well, we already passed a motion several months ago, no raise. That stands, right? We passed a motion a couple of months ago.
Correct, that's what I said earlier, questioner, yes, that that motion still stands. However, the number has been figured in there just to show it to you, so you knew what it was.
So we voted no COLA, no merit.
Right.
I'm not sure about the merits, but
I think so.
I think you did. Holly, do you remember the motion?
I apologize, I don't remember the specific wording of that motion.
And also, in this budget, is 2.5 million for the highway department. That needs to come out.
Yeah, that's the thing I was going to question. We haven't heard from Tom yet.
He was out in, I was going to say the rotunda. No, I wanted to say the rotunda. He's out in the rotunda, and I asked him about that, and he's, he is working on it. This is the answer I got.
And he was using his reserves, he said, as well.
Yeah, because that's going to be kind of critical for us. That's a huge amount that'll make a difference here.
Well, we already voted to take it out.
Yeah. But I'd like to see how that figures in.
What's that total with 578-580, I guess I can add it. 578-580 and 180-777.
Well, Mr. Chair, the agenda item 28 was new FTE requests. Are we on that, or did we slip on past that one?
So, I'm not trying to interrupt you, George, but I'd like to know if we took the 759-357 then out of the total amount of our budget this year, if that's what we voted.
It's still sitting in your total, total, but the motion still stands that it is not to be included.
Okay, so we just put it in there just in case we changed
Just put it in there to show you that we met all your budget goals originally set, with that dollar amount still in there, but still meeting the reserves and the other budget goals that you set.
So the only thing we don't have in there at this point is the new FTEs, or did we budget for all the FTEs?
The FTEs are in there as well. They're separate line items underneath each department on your budget summary tab.
So with COLA, with the merits, with the FTEs, we've got them all, and the total provisionals, 89.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, hand it in. Your other taker has the motion.
I found the motion on April 19th. The first budget preparation motion was to inform department heads to prepare 2017 budgets without merit steps or wage scale adjustments.
Okay, so it was nothing, period.
And that was four to one, five to zip?
Three to two.
Three to two, okay. So back to 28, that's the agenda item. Have we passed, slipped past that, or?
No, we're just trying
We're not going to get there yet.
Cash reserves applied.
We've just been talking budget in general up to this point. The board can certainly make motions on the FTEs if you request, or if you wish to do that today, you certainly can.
We used cash reserves last year, or this year, 9 million?
Where is the contingency budget at?
It is on your outside tab. We moved it from 50,000 up to 250,000. And that was to get a hold of the budget supplements requests that keep coming in that was affecting our cash reserves.
Well, I, see, I don't understand that, because it's going to come out of cash reserves one way or the other.
Well, it does, but historically, when we've had 100, $200,000 in contingency, we have closed year after year after year with 100% of that not spent. It's a lot easier to do a contingency transfer than it is to do a budget supplement. And I would, you know, the insurance shortfall with us building, rotating the renewal to May 1st. So when that came in and we were short, I think, around $60,000, if you use contingency, then it's a motion by the board, you present the reason why, you make a motion, no hearing, and we assume that the budget is going to be spent. Whereas if we only have a $50,000 contingency budget like we had this year, and in order to meet a few of the budget shortfalls, we recommended spend contingency first. I think we might have a few thousand left in that. And so anything that comes in for the remainder of the year would very much reduce the cash reserves. But if you had, so, so the logic behind that was with trying to get away from waiting till the end of the year to do the supplements, and having them all come in and hit the cash reserves, if we pump up the contingency fund budget a little bit, we make the assumption we're going to spend that $200,000 right away.
Yeah, I was one of the ones that wanted all the supplements at the end of the year, because that gives you a chance to make it up other ways in your budget, instead of just coming in and saying, sorry, I need the money.
But the difference is
It's a difference of theory.
Of the money rolling back into the general fund versus not being budgeted for at all and hitting our cash reserves.
My problem with having it in contingency is, yeah, it's a lot easier to get out. Yeah, it is. That's the problem.
Well, again, it's only still on $200,000 when you think about it.
That makes it incumbent upon us, any contingency transfer needs to be really, really verified.
For the board to just say no.
It needs to be sold to us, just not automatic. I mean, that's, I guess that's the way you counter that. But what you're talking about is a simplified process. If you put it in a contingency fund, then we can transfer it easier procedurally.
And
The procedure supplement is, is that decided by law?
Right.
By law, we have to have a
A hearing.
Hearing, okay, so you want to simplify the process. But that doesn't mean it's incumbent upon us to say, hey, wait a minute, you already need this money, and, you know, you're going to come and really plead to us.
Frankly, you could still make them wait.
I don't get it, because, guys, your cash reserves are, this year were 9,84278. So am I not getting something, that 200,000 is going to do what for that?
The contingency fund.
Not much.
That's what I'm saying, so
Our reserves were getting too low.
Too low, because at the end of last year, we had substantial requests for supplements at the end of the year, and those are the kinds of things. So we redirected our thought process, which has been one for many years of let us prepare for budget supplements at the end of the year, and hope that a lot of it can be absorbed. And that's what we've done it for many years. Now, the thinking that Julie wanted you to go to is see those taken out right away, so, so we don't get to November and not realize where we're at. So we're taking everything away right when it happens.
But once we take it out, the 200,000 does what? With, I guess I'm not really getting it. If it's 9 million, your 200 keeps you that much better in the general fund? I mean, how does it work?
We assume that's going to be spent. When she does that analysis where she says at the end of the year, she's assuming you've spent that whole 200,000, and a $5,000 supplement here, or a $12,000 supplement there, rather than doing those as supplements, we can do those as contingency, helps out, every little dollar helps out the bottom line.
9 million, that 200,000 helps out? I guess I'm not getting the helps out.
When you're talking cash flow, yes.
At the bottom, the bottom line at the end of year, cash flow. Are you, because, because what I'm saying, if you're supplement
Because one, you're anticipating it's going to be spent, the other, you're not anticipating it. So you're taking out of your savings account when you weren't expecting to.
Well, you are anyway.
And when you're trying to balance your reserves, or making sure your cash flow, since we only get paid twice a year, it makes a difference on your cash flow.
Yes, you're going to have to show me that, because I don't see how 200 makes a difference at 9 million, but you're good at explaining things on the backside better to me, Ms. Holly, or Ms. Gage.
How about this approach? Cindy wouldn't bound to check if we had enough money in individual accounts. If Cindy or
We don't, we don't overdraft on, you're correct.
If Kevin doesn't got enough money in his budget, then she's going to bound the check on him, or refuse the voucher. But, so he needs money in his account.
Yeah, that's why
As do all the other departments. So if he looks like he's coming up short, he'll come to ask us for some money.
Exactly.
So that Cindy can write a check. That kind of simplify it?
That very much simplifies it, obviously.
Thank you.
Are you keeping track of all this stuff? Because Black Hills Vision has got to come out too.
That's the only, yeah, that one's the only one that, that on my notes from Julie is done.
So if we took out the 5, or 759-357, plus the 10,000, so we're up the 769-357. Anything else we're taking out so far that we've reduced based on this motions and budget? About 770,000.
And we'll make sure that the 2.5 from highway is
Out.
It's two from highway, the extra half was city.
Right, but still accounted for that way.
About 3 million difference, Buskew, with the 2.5 plus the 7?
Oh, no, I'm down to about 230,000 I'd like to take out yet. But I guess the sheriff is not going to agree to that.
Tell me how you got your numbers, Buskew, when you
Well, I, just, I do it very simply and maybe way too simply. I take last year's budget, add the growth, and I think that's what our budget could be this year without raising the mill levy. And so, and I got, then I looked at this year's proposed budget, which was about 3.5 million more than that figure. So I thought, okay, we got to take 3.5 million out of here. 2.5 of that was highway. Now I'm down to a million dollars. Well, if we take out some COLA and some merit, now we're down to a couple hundred thousand.
30,000.
You know, my next thing was the contingency, but I guess I'm going to get out loaded on that. So I can probably live with a couple hundred thousand more than what I thought we should have.
However, you're, as it was presented, if you look in this information that Julie gave us, if we keep those increases in there, we are still lowering mill levy.
That's correct.
So if your purpose is to lower mill levy, the way it's presented now meets that.
Yeah, and the way I presented it, it's even more.
So I just have to ask you, Ron, why don't you want to pay our employees?
I do, I do. They got a hell of a raise last year. Come on. And now there's no COLA, and we want to give them a cost of living, and there isn't any.
That Jared Toldo, I wish he was here to tell about social security raises, zero, right?
Point 2% is what social security
Ron, that's not 100% fair statement. Not everybody got significant increases.
No.
True.
We kind of did a school district thing. It's really what we did.
Well, and I don't agree why I don't want
Some we had to push to make sure they got the 1.5 COLA, if I remember right.
And there were some whose salaries went down.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all true, but if But if you look at, at the, at the survey we took last year, our employees were not badly paid last year and we gave them a raise. So they're getting paid, they're, you can't say, "Ron, why are you against paying our employees?" They, they are getting paid pretty good.
And I'm going to try to come to Commissioner Buschard, arrest you a little bit. Neighboring state, they're, they're hurting, the whole Wyoming and, and North Dakota a little bit. But, but both those states don't have the money like they used to have. So, so now we're, now we're, that changes our competitive nature or stature. So our, our employees are, I, I think, well-paid. The city probably overpays, but...
We don't have any problem getting employees. The sheriff does on corrections because, quite frankly, that's not a desirable job. But other than that, we get, we get applications for jobs.
Is anybody paying so much money, Wyoming's going to have to cut out their general, their budget?
There was three votes that said no.
So, so Mr. Chair, can I have Nick explain again why we did what we did last year? Just to refresh everyone's memory.
Thank you, Nick Street, HR Director, again. Last year, we're referring to the Condry Wage Study. That took place in the fall of 2014. We implemented that on January first of 2015. One of the reasons we did that was to adjust our scale to make it competitive within the market. Now, everything you guys, everything that all you commissioners are saying are true. However, one of the things that we did that I want to keep everyone aware of is when we skip a year on giving pay raises, we eventually make that up later down the line. And one of the faults, Ron, you're right, we didn't do a lot of wage adjustments. I meant we, for the most part, we were properly compensated. But one of the things, when we don't make any adjustments, is we try to catch up for following years. And that was where we were lagging behind the other entities. And so to make sure that our people are paid properly for not only attraction but retention, that is why I would advocate that we reconsider the motion to not give merits or cost of living increases or wage scale adjustments. Now, I don't know if this is a proper time or not, but when we talk about that there's no CPI this year, that's correct. So if you're, if we're using that as the basis for not giving a cost of living adjustment, then I would offer the fact that in the past years, there has been a three percent CPI and we chose not to give a three percent wage scale adjustment. So if we want to tie it one hundred percent to whatever the CPI is, I'm fine with that. But it feels to me that when there's no CPI, we use that as a reason not to adjust our scale. When there's a two and a half, two point seven five percent CPI, we give half of that.
Well, Nick, how did you have, if you didn't do cola except for one year, but we also did a Condry study back, how long ago? Didn't they all bring them up to a certain level and then now we redid it again?
We've only had one Condry study done for Pennington County for all of our employees. We did a small study that just looked at the elected officials. And then we also piggybacked on the city's Condry study before my arrival.
Okay, that's, I guess, I, I thought it was Pennington County's full-blown, like it was what we just did.
No, we've only done one.
Okay.
But artist completed one, brought us to market value.
It brought us...
If Condry, if Condry was doing what they advertised to do, we were at, at market.
It brought us to our goal of being lower end market value. We did not set the goal of being one hundred percent market.
In the range of market.
In the range of market, correct.
So, so now when all the rest of the nation is zero CPI and a whole bunch of social security receptions, zero CPI, so you're going to stick your hand in their pockets more to, for retention?
I, I honestly don't care about Wyoming. I don't care about North Dakota. I care about Pennington County and the employees that work here. And just because they have financial difficulties and we don't, doesn't mean that we shouldn't get a raise. Because they don't care when we have financial difficulties.
Wasn't zero CPI the federal, didn't the federal, feds declare zero? Or just the state?
The state.
State.
And I don't know the federal state.
State employees are actually getting a two point seven cola.
So they're not tying it to the...
Well, the feds sure declared social security is zero.
Well...
And, but then again, that is not how...
But that's according to something different, George.
That isn't the only determination on how we arrive at our salaries. And I don't think it should be. Julie in the auditor's office put in the fact that with the tight budgeting that certain department heads and elected officials did, we had the money to meet your budgetary goals and still compensate the employees. Now, there might be a year in the future where we can't meet budgetary goals, so the wages have to be frozen. But if we can meet the goals, we can still compensate our employees with additional increase, then why wouldn't we do it?
It's, that's assuming, assuming that the budget goals are exactly what we wanted. And I, I, I can go back and look. I said, "That's not, I'll vote to say, "Yeah, that's the goals to start the budgeting process." But I'm not going to vote for them.
Sure. And, and I, and we, we've had this back and forth in the years past. You say, "I'll start with the merits and colas in, but don't hold me to that in the end."
Next year, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to say, "We're not going to put them in, period." And if, if we have enough money at the end, maybe we can put some in.
Okay.
If that's the way we were supposed to do it, that's maybe the way I should do it.
I'm trying to figure it out. Okay, so if, if you had a business, you'd either give a raise or the people, you would add more people to your business and you wouldn't give a raise because you needed more bodies to do the job. That's not the same in Pennington County. We need, because people, a lot of people here or departments are asking for more people. So I'm trying, maybe I'm debating that or, or, I guess I hadn't made up my mind. I'm just listening to all the arguments. But I, I'm just seeing it as a business. Maybe that's, and, and so I either give a raise or I do the FTEs and say, "Okay, this is more important than people getting a raise. We need to take care of the department so they're not overworked, so they don't have overtime, so they don't," that kind of stuff. So to me, I'm just looking at all sides. I never said, well, I think there's only two of us that said we weren't. But it's good to hear the conversation and...
Sure.
And why, and the defense of the employees of two percent. And I'm glad that we're having this debate because the community knows, needs to know what our bottom line is.
Absolutely. And if we want to put this on the agenda for next time, unless this decision needs to be made, I can come back with additional information that you request. But I know the sheriff has some things he'd like to say.
Chairman, if I may, a couple of comments. And I want to say upfront, I support the cola and the step increase or merit or whatever you want to call it. And it is a little frustrating, and Nick voiced this. We want to use Wyoming and North Dakota or CPI when it's down, but we don't want to use those things when it's up. When it's booming in Wyoming and North Dakota, wage scales are high, it's like, "Well, that's up there. People can go up there, get a job. We're Pennington County, we'll pay what we're going to pay." So that's a little frustrating from our perspective to use it one way but not use it the other way. And Nick pointed this out. If you want to marry it to CPI, then marry it to CPI when it's high as well as when it's low. And you haven't done that historically. And, you know, everybody worked hard, all the elected officials and the department heads with the auditor's office to bring you a budget that reduces the mill levy, which is what it does with all these things built in it, and you're still not happy. So it's a little frustrating from elected officials' perspective or other department heads that we put all this effort into a reasonable budget, try and do good government, good business, and all we do is get criticized. So, and I know it's, it's, it's all fair game to talk about and discuss, but I think you're minimizing the amount of work that everybody put into this budget to make it work. And I just would encourage you to support the cola and the merit and the FTEs that are in there. And I guess you can vote on them individually by department or elected official or en masse, however you want to do it. But certainly advocate that you give them all consideration. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Kev, but I just, I like the debate so the public knows what we're thinking or they're thinking and that, that it's a good debate on what they're saying. So it's good to hear from everybody and why they did what they did. Because I think that merit and cola just came out and then we voted and we were done. So I needed to know myself the reason, and I think the public does too, why or why not. It doesn't mean that's set at this point unless somebody changes their mind. We need three votes, so that's what it comes down to.
Well, it's not set anyway because this is the preliminary budget and the real one didn't, didn't do till the end of September.
Yes. So don't get frustrated yet until it happens. Because we do appreciate all the work. And I've, this year, when I was listening to the budget sessions compared to the first time I did, it was, it was good. It was great, actually. Because I could understand it better and I could understand the way Julie and Holly worked hard in finding that to be simplified when you come in as a commissioner. It was a lot easier this year. So I appreciate all the work the, the department heads have done, plus Holly and Julie. Because I was like, "You guys, I can't understand all this. And if you're new, we can't understand it." So there's been a lot of work done on this budget, all the way done or all the way through, but we are not done yet. So don't get frustrated yet.
Ms. KJ?
What do you want, KJ? You want basically, usually I think Julie wants us to be pretty much done so she, next the meeting, we can get the completed one and vote on it?
The meeting of the nineteenth, as of right now, is the last and only meeting scheduled before the thirty-first of July, when you have to approve the provisional. So if she, the email she'd given me, she kind of focused in that there may be some motions from the board regarding FTEs and that she had indeed taken out the Black Hills Vision and made notes to a couple of other things, the highway, which we know Tom is, is working on, the possibility of the Kroll case liability and what could be done with that. And what Judge Pyepley referred to this morning about the capital cases, if there was any specific motion from the board made today, she would adjust the budget for the final presentation of the provisional budget, as Commissioner Buschard has pointed out. And I know all the commissioners are aware of. At that point, we move into August and early September before we have to have the final budget approved and can, but this is for the publication. So anything that you specifically wanted to take in out, like the Black Hills Vision, will be removed before that publication of the provisional budget.
Mr. Chair, may I please? You know, part of our budget hearings was spent listening to public defenders, state's attorney, sheriff's office, all of this extra funding that is really requiring extra services because of the drug issues going on. That is a reality that we as a county have to deal with. And then it flows over into our court system. You know, we get stuck here griping and moaning about salaries. But our reality is that we need to look forward to what is actually happening and prepare for it. And if we are not going to do that and we're going to throw the balls around about, "Well, I don't want to do salaries, I don't want to do this." It is a bigger picture. And we are responsible for taking care of that bigger picture. But every year, we come down to the salaries. I know that they're important, but what is really important that we as commissioners take care of our people in our county. And we are not doing that when we get stuck on those, on, on just considering salaries. There's much more to be considered. And I would challenge all the rest of you to stop and think about that. Stop and think about what was told to us. We, we haven't even addressed the situation with the Kroll insurance. We haven't talked about any of that. That's important. And then you might go back and deal with your salaries and your FTEs. But, but we need to really make some decisions based on what is going to happen and what we are actually going to do to meet those challenges. And I, I really don't hear, most of the time, we just want to gripe at everybody. And, and, and that is wrong.
Okay, I'm not going to gripe, but I'm going to say that the new FTEs, the total amount is about seven hundred thousand. Six ninety-five, actually, but seven three three. So I'll keep saying, is the raise more important or, or are we okay with just doing the seven hundred thousand and the, do you see what I'm saying?
Okay, and I will totally tell you what I mean based on what I just said.
Okay.
Look at who, what's in here. We're talking about four people for a public defender because they're overworked because of all that's happening out on the streets. We are talking about the sheriff needing four people, same kind of thing. State's attorney, that is ten of the thirteen and a half. Is that? I mean, that's what I'm saying. You should be making a decision based on what's actually happening out there. And then you go back and figure out the rest of it. But to just say, "Well, there's, there's thirteen and a half FTE here." No, there is not thirteen and a half. There is an important situation here that we need to address. And that is the problems we have out on the streets that are brought into us. And now we, as state law requires, have to provide for the legal counsel, the jails. We have to provide for all of that. And...
I, I'm not against that, Ms. Nancy. I'm just saying, we just told other people to pick priority. And I, I'll say it again. Is a raise priority...
I'm just saying that your priority is not this.
Is a raise priority or is people, seven hundred thousand in people priority? And is the mill levy, this is my other question, is the mill levy, what is the mill levy that you're talking about, Nancy? What's the mill levy difference that Ron's talking about?
The problem here is that this is included in the budget as presented here. And this budget lowers our mill levy eighty-nine percent, eight point, or point eight nine, I can't remember. And that includes all the requested additional FTEs and the cola and step increases and still reduces the levy. And that's what Julie would especially want me to make sure that you understand in the presentation of her budget.
Thank you.
Can I ask this, KJ? Does it include that increased premium for the, the insurance?
Yes, it does.
Okay, good. I wanted to make sure of that.
Yes, it does. And just as it relates to the insurance question cost, that was one thing. And there was, we, we did a review of that to make sure of, of individual departments. There was a few that went up, a few that went down. Julie was re-verifying all of those as, as well, every, every single department to make sure that we had accurate...
Health insurance.
Health costs as it relates to the current enrollment. You're always going to have some fluctuation and you have to have some wiggle room for that, especially when you go to a large department like the jail, where you do tend to have a little bit more of the, the change of, of employees. But even in the smaller departments, you can have one person change and elect family coverage and, and it will make a big impact on the budget.
And I like the debate. Even if these guys are not in agreement or someone's not in agreement, I like to know what people are thinking. And I think other people do too. So I don't think the debate is bad, whether it's, you know, they're complaining about salaries or whatever. Nancy, I appreciate the debate. And in the long run, that's how you change people's minds or have an understanding of what people are thinking. So some of it...
I'm not disagreed with you, Deb. I'm just saying that we get hung up on the wrong things. If we are really doing our job as commissioners, we should be planning and looking at what is happening and providing the services and the requirements that we are required by, eighty percent of what we do is required by state law.
Okay, the only thing I can think of that hasn't been talked about is the consensus that we had at our last meeting relative to the comprehensive plan. And I'm wondering if financing that in the budget is something we should be doing. And I, and I'm not saying setting an amount, but if I understood it right, PJ was going to put out requests. And will, we have that information in time for... And will, we have that information in time for...
Yeah, that'll have to be a, a decision for the final budget, if the boards so choose us to go forward with that in September.
And did we ever decide on a working session? Or we're not going to have one this year?
Well, it depends on how, how much we identify as things we yet have to resolve.
Sounds like we have a few.
At this point, you know, we've been dealing in generalities, and, and we could come to a conclusion in the next 10 minutes if, or we can do it next meeting. But these folks need information from us on what you want changed before they can bring it back to us. So, do you want anything different than what direction we're headed right now?
I guess the three people that voted for the COLA and step increase, if that's still the same vote, and that's, I guess that's going to be the same.
It's, it's possible to rescind that, and...
That's what I'm saying. Are we, are you saying that now?
And the, the budget as it's set in front of us right now includes it. So, it's, it's not something they have to generate numbers for, it's already in there.
But we voted to take it out. So, I'm asking if there's been a change of vote. And should we leave it in or out? Or you're just waiting for the working session or something else?
What will the working session do? I mean, right now, what we're looking at, we want to decide about the FTEs. We're going to decide about the COLA and the merit. The other thing that we need, which we can't get yet until Tom gets his highway department budget together, we need to know that. We need, and, and that's something a working session won't do anything for. We need to know what the cost of, of the possible study for, from planning and zoning. We don't have that yet. We won't for a little while. So, we can't do anything in a planning session there.
I guess the bottom line is, the debate, do you want it to debate now, or do you want to debate it in a working session?
What do you want to debate, Deb?
I guess they're going to debate on highway priorities, we're going to debate on COLA and merit some more, because it sounds like we're not ready to make that decision.
We have.
Okay, that's what I asked.
We've, we've made that decision. We made the highway decision.
Okay, you guys, you just keep moving forward, and I'll just listen. Because all I'm saying is, I keep hearing there might be rescinding. I don't know where the budget's going, because I haven't heard any specifics. And do we make the motions here, Ms. Holly, about what we're doing? Because we couldn't at the other budget meeting, because we just kind of asked, is there a consensus?
Now's the time. This is the official meeting.
So, so far, the 578 and 180 still in there. $10,000 gone.
The only one I have on record.
Highway, like you said, don't know. PJ, what are we doing with PJ? We ready to make decisions? I'm good.
Mr. Chair, 28 is still on the agenda.
What's that?
We were on 28, right?
You're right.
And, and I'd like to vote on new FTE requests.
Okay, thank you, George.
And my motion is to approve registered deeds. And I guess that half FTE, for extension, we already approved. So, my motion is to approve one and a half FTEs. New FTEs.
When was, help me with the extension, when was that approved?
We, when, when they were here, didn't we agree to give the, make the gal full-time?
Not approve, but just a consensus.
Well, we, we pretty much moved it.
Well, we can't pretty much move it, we have to move it.
Well, we did, we did, we did. Right, Karen, we did.
I wasn't here.
Oh, that's, that's right, you weren't, yeah.
It was consensus, it wasn't...
What he's saying, he would need to make, he wants to make the motion for one and a half FTEs, and one of those is extension. Okay, thank you.
And one for the treasurer, registered deeds.
We got one and a half FTEs, ones for extension, and a, and a halves for registered deeds?
No, 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 the half is for extension, and the one is for registered deeds.
Got it.
There's no motion, no second.
So far, no.
Is there a second? Guys, for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion just to move it forward, to approve all the new FTEs that are in the budget at this time, the new ones.
I'll second now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Well, I, I just hate to do this too, because, you know, I think we still have a motion in effect that we're not going to do any more hiring from probably 15 years ago, and we're 200 over that probably. But as the county grows in numbers, they expect more services, and we have to supply them. It's a never-ending battle. It's never-ending. It starts with the law enforcement, it goes to the public defender, the state's attorney. Now, we spend $5 million on the courthouse. It just isn't, and our jail after that. It never ends. But I don't, I don't know what you do. You appeal to the people out there to quit committing crimes, I guess.
Cut services.
Mr. Chair, I'll say one more time, there's a guy that's, I've heard talk about, probably starting 20 years ago, so there's kind of a circle. You get more cops, or more deputies, and you have to have more prosecutors, and you got more public defenders, and more judges, and more jail, round and round. And that's where we got to, we got to quit, pick up these kids that are drinking beer and jaywalking. Thank you.
I only wish they were drinking beer.
Let's see, how do we get off the motion?
There, there was a motion and a second, sir.
Yeah, we, right. And if there's no further comment, we'll have a roll call vote.
Buschroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other direction for the budget?
Okay, now, just a question. Does someone have to rescind on the previous in order to vote on COLA and raise, or did COLA and merit? Or are we leaving it like it is?
That was going to be my request, if I can speak, Mr. Chair. I guess I would be here formally to ask that you would reconsider that vote. I know that was done to start the budgeting process. I don't know if you're prepared to make that decision today, or if you would reconsider just the wage increase request for next meeting. But that would be the request, and I could put together any information that you want, any questions that you might have. I think it is, I understand where you're coming from, but I think it's premature to take that out and call it a done deal before myself and the department heads have a cha, and elected officials have a chance to bring you a, their ideas more well-thought-out and formulated than I'm doing right here. So, that would be my request, is you would maybe not take action on that today.
So, there was, who are the three, so one of the three, who are the three that voted for it? I can't remember.
You did, Ron did, and he did.
You, Ron, and George.
No, it was Lindell, I thought.
No. Buschroot, yes. Farabee, yes. Hadcock, no. Troutman, no. Peterson, yes. That was to, to prepare without merit steps. So, you know, if I can interject, the motion was to inform department heads to prepare 2017 budgets without merit steps or wage scale adjustments. I don't know that that has to be rescinded to carry forward for the provisional. Could you just make another motion?
It, it seems like what you did is you just gave direction on how to prepare the initial budget. You, you didn't literally deny merits and COLA. I mean, that's, that's how I'm hearing it. So, I don't, I don't know that there's anything to, and it wouldn't be reconsidered, have to be rescission. But I don't, I don't really think there's anything to, you can say, go ahead now and, and put them in.
We need to vote now on it. So, it's not, because the rescission wasn't official.
To have something on the record, you could do a motion to now prepare budgets with it in.
Just, just before we go too much further, one of the things, I mean, your drop in budget, Tom, is going to be considerable. And that's going to make a difference. And I would like to, I kind of like to know what that drop is. Can we, do we have a, let's see. I, I'd just like to kind of know what the mill levy is going to be with your drop.
There won't, the way I understood it, there will be no change in the mill levy as it is now.
Okay.
What I was asking was to be, have part of the general fund reinstated that was removed last year.
Okay.
My 2016 budget is without any additional general fund or, or wheel tax. So, my 2017 budget will look an awful lot like 16. After we get done, um...
So, there won't be another $2 million coming off? I was thinking maybe that it was in there.
No, it was not. My 2017 will look like my 2016 budget.
Okay, got it figured out.
The unorganized road mill levy is going to keep, that's going to be the same. Unorganized road mill levy, which is a separate levy.
Those are all the same. Those are all the same as what they were a year ago. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so, is that bottom line, we have, we're going to vote on that, or we're not going to vote on that?
I'll vote for it. So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we leave the COLA and merit as presented in this current budget, in the budget.
Is there a second?
I thought we were going to vote on it.
For lack of a second.
I guess, for me, I didn't vote on that, because I believe we should give the COLA, and everybody knows probably, pretty much in the county, the merits. I believe you can merit through that four-step program. So, I would make a motion, the COLA, to increase the 2% and not to add the merits.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, because we are confused, I think that we need Nick to, and the department heads to work on this and present it next time.
I don't see that we're confused.
I don't think I'm confused.
May I? Again...
Are you, are you confused?
Well, you know, I guess, if you're looking for something to move forward so you can publish KJ and Julie's provisional budget, then I guess, from my perspective, it doesn't matter if you take it out or you leave it in. Because I'm still going to get on the agenda and make a case for the September budget that we do some sort of wage increase. And I might bring three options for that. And you can vote no on all of them, or you could refuse to take a vote on those. But I guess procedurally, from representing HR, I'll, I'll come and make the pitch either way.
So, here's my point on that. You publish a budget without it, it's going to be hard to deal with it. You better have your stuff together now.
And it's going to be a lot more work, because we're going to have to go in and take it all out. So, if, in fact, there's future discussion between provisional and final, the budget that you have in front of you includes the 13 and a half FTEs and the COLA merit. And you can approve that on the 19th. Nobody has to do anything more. And then, from there, you debate to whatever degree.
It's just as easy to take it out as to put it in. So, it makes, you know...
Psychologically, for people, it isn't. But on the 19th, you would come then, Nick, with...
I would come with my recommendations on why I believe wage increases are important. And I could come with just a cost of living or a wage scale adjustment. I could also come with some rationale on why I believe the merit system is important.
Well, the cost of living, to me, makes sense, and the merit, when I say merit, it's you're going above and beyond. And some people give all merits in their departments, and some give certain merits. So, just eliminate it, give the 2%, and then raise people to where they should be if you think they're doing above and beyond their job. That's what people do.
But we don't have that option in our current system.
You, you can't raise them those levels, one or two or three levels?
We do not have that option.
The word merits is a misnomer in Pennington County.
I disagree. I believe there's a lot of people that deserve a merit increase.
But for me, I'll just say personally, I can give the COLA, but the merit...
So, because a few department heads or elected officials aren't doing it properly, we just do away with it all?
Not even that. I just, I, I told you when we first started that I didn't believe the merit system, the way we do it, or how you do it in Pennington County, I think...
We do it like the city.
And because of the budget, I'll just say it.
You could do it as the city, and just give everyone a step increase every year, and not discuss merit.
We could do it, and I can give them three steps every year.
Absolutely, dude. I mean, if you're, if you want to say that you don't trust the department heads and the elected officials enough to responsibly institute a merit system, but are, we've just, we've all come to an agreement that the step system is what works best for local government, then we can move then forward just every year.
That's not my word, is trust. It's when I came in here, and we already did it, and then as an elected official, because we did it for three other people, we had to do it for the four, otherwise it wouldn't be fair. I mean, that didn't work so great for the rest of us that came in. So, do you remember me saying that to you? That didn't seem quite right. So, that's why I had a problem with the merit system. You're, you're saying it's not a trust thing for, I've just heard that from you guys, not from me, about how some give it, some don't. I've been listening to your employees and your people. So, um...
But I don't believe any person that you talk to says they don't believe that they should have it, that they should be able to move up through the scale.
It's the way it's done. And then, when I came in, it was the way it was done.
Okay, now, we have a motion and a second. And to debate on what Nick brings to the next meeting with his proposals, we can debate them then, merit or not merit of steps. And we do have someone who wishes to comment.
And with Nick's proposals, he's going to bring along about a half a dozen people from, from, from the senior center, from, from the senior center, to one of the senior centers. Go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Dan Richard again. I'm, again, looking at this from a different perspective, maybe it's because I spent so many years in military. But you guys voted three to two to direct, to direct that a merit or cost of living not be in the budget, and not one of you are appear upset that it's been put in the budget. Thank you.
I guess, if I may comment to that, Commander. I guess we, we're going on a technicality here, but no single department had put in that, that was done by the auditor's office. I didn't prepare my budget with a cost of living or a merit increase. That, those numbers were just provided to you, so I know it's...
So, that we could look at it.
It's vernacular, but...
Come on, come on.
It's, I mean, I didn't do it. I'm just...
None of them, they all said that when you asked.
It's all good, back to the motion.
Everybody, everybody's, everybody's a victim in this case. Auditor isn't even here to speak for herself.
And obviously, as you prepare budgets, everybody knows that it's very time-consuming. And so, when you gather that information together, it's good to know, what is the cost of a 1%? We always prepare that, because from there, you can go 2%, 3%, 4%. And we work on the cost of the merit slash step slash pay increase, that you want to call it. And we figure that based on the average of about 85%. 80 to 85% receive them and get the cost of them, because Julie would agree with Commissioner Troutman. It's a lot easier to put it in at the beginning than to put it in at the end. And so, as she prepares that, she wants to give you, the worst-case scenario, this is how much it was cost. And that's why she included it, and brought it to you, and showed you that with those increases in there, the mill levy was still reduced.
And I agree with you, because if we take it in or out, out, it's nice to know the number we're talking about. So, I appreciate it. That doesn't mean I'm keeping any of the numbers in, so they show us all the numbers, whether keeping the FTE in or out. So, they do that on all the budget, just to see the numbers with or without a FTA, FTE with or without a COLA, because that's what things, that's how things happen at the budgets. You have them in, and then you take them out, because then you don't know the number you're taking out.
It's pretty tough, and we've been there before in past years, when something comes up between April and August, that you have to get built into a budget at the end. So, it's a lot easier... So it's a lot easier. It, it's a motion of the board that takes that in or takes that out. That's why I once again say to you, if you have a provisional budget that includes it, it sounds like there's a whole lot of discussion to be had on it. If you want it taken out and then put back in at a different rate, we can do that. Or we can leave it as it is and go from there until September.
And Mr. Chair, I got a comment about the mill levy. Let's not get carried away thinking that the mill levy's up or down is of any real significance. The significance is in the tax bill. Now, if we'd have told the Director of Equalization to leave assessments the same, leave them the same, which we didn't do, of course, and couldn't do.
Couldn't do.
But, but the assessments went up. So even though the mill levy might have went down a little bit, the tax bill, and that's what people look at, is the tax bill. Those are going to go up for most people.
So maybe, Mr. Chair, that we could get that kind of information next week or next meeting. You know, you guys have presented before that with this mill levy, in fact, it's in here. You know, if you, if you look at it.
Generally uses a $100,000 figure.
If you, if you look, you have that information right here.
And assessments are set by the state.
Yeah.
And what the IRS does, the other assessment, we get what, we share about 30% of that, 67% of those assessments are our school. So we need to look at that as well when you're talking about assessments, and that's what we control. We don't.
What Julie's put together, you, obviously, is the county budget.
Right.
Probably difficult to compute, but I'd like to see the average, the average tax bill increase from the county.
Let me know when you want to vote on this motion.
Vote.
What are we voting on?
Okay, I'll call the question.
What the assessment's going up?
What are we voting on?
To include a 2% COLA in the provisional budget.
And no merit or just, just strictly a COLA?
The motion was COLA.
Okay.
Hold on.
Buscree?
No.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
Yes, yes, motion failed.
Anything else we want to do on this budget? I think we've chased it around the barn about.
So don't we have to come to a vote on the COLA and merit or is it just?
We have, we just did.
You just did. None?
It's none.
And just to clarify, I, I believed the motion was to move the budget forward as presented. I'm asking, those were Deb's words, I thought, move forward.
No.
No, there was a motion on the floor to include a 2% COLA.
That died for lack of a second.
Okay. So, so the motion is for them to remove everything? That's what you have, Karen? Okay. I just want to be sure of that so we can get it to Julie. When I heard your move forward, I thought we were moving forward as it was.
So now, we're still where we're at, right?
No. Nope, they took it all off.
That's what I thought so too, but.
What, what you guys just did was take out 700 and some thousand dollars out of the budget that sits in front of you right now, which reaffirms the previous motion that was made back in April.
No, she said she wanted to pay the COLA and not the merit, and I said no.
So it failed.
It failed.
So now it, it needs to come out of that budget.
No.
No.
She did not say that. She did not say come on a budget, she just said that.
Okay, if I'm confused, if you're not going to pay it, then why do you want it in there? I'm sorry, if I'm confused, then tell me.
Okay, here's the budget with it in.
Yes.
And what I understood Deb's motion to say is she wants to pay the COLA and not the merit. But she didn't say take it out of the budget.
Where's it coming out of? Where's it coming out of, Nancy?
You need to say specifically what you're doing with the funding.
Go ahead, Matt.
Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney here is your Roberts alleged expert. I believe that the status quo ante, so to speak, was that the board had directed a budget be prepared without those two line items. Therefore, I took, and I believe the other commissioners took, Commissioner Hadcock's motion to be to reinsert the COLA, but not the merit raises. Since that failed, we go back to the vote of two weeks ago, which directed that both the COLA and the merit be out of the budget. And that was what I understood was being voted on just now.
No, the recommendation back in April was that we prepare the budget with that, but we've never voted in or out. We just said, prepare the budget with zero. We haven't said that's the way it's supposed to be.
But you just made a motion for both.
Excuse me, excuse me. The budget that was delivered to us had both of them in it.
And we voted on.
And so the directive from that first motion has not been implemented either way. And in that respect, we still have the option, because one motion failed that was specific to 2%, we can change it to 1.75%, or we can make it 3%, as long as it's a different motion.
I believe that's correct, but I believe that Commissioner Troutman, if I'm kind of reading the sense of the room, what you thought you were voting on is whether to remove the merits from the budget. What Commissioner Hadcock, assuming that they were both in, Commissioner Hadcock seemed to be assuming is that neither was in the budget, and she wanted to add one.
It's in here.
I know, physically that document, but from the April resolution, you directed one be prepared without it. So as I understood her motion, it was essentially to direct the auditor to prepare a budget that had the 2% COLA, but not the merit raises.
Right, and Nancy made a motion that failed that put both back in, and that failed.
No, no, Nancy's motion would have just left it as presented.
Yeah.
Which includes it.
That's what I was just saying. No, sorry.
But if, I, I guess it does appear to me that it, there was not necessarily a meeting of minds on where we're starting and where we're going. But I think Commissioner, the, the chair is correct. If there are alternative motions as it relates to one or the other, those are still available to you, but.
I just hate always having to vote for something when we don't have all our information. We consistently do that. We were told, Nick, to bring this information back, and now we consistently vote for something, and we don't have the information. I just think that's really poor government.
Well, obviously, you want to vote on this until it passes, so why don't you just make the motion?
No, I'm going to wait.
No, we're going to vote on it until it passes. We voted four or five times against it, but we still keep voting for it.
Nope, I'm going to wait till Nick brings that forward.
Not good government to wait to the last minute either.
So I thought, so I need to make the motion to leave them both in there so we get to a final conclusion of discussion?
No, you did not make that motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion to leave them both in there at this time, in the provisional budget like as presented.
We can't do that now.
Why? You just said to make a motion.
I believe that you can, right. Because the previous motion was to leave one in and remove the other, that motion failed. This motion is different, and the board may certainly consider it. So this motion is properly before the board, whatever you decide on it.
Which is exactly the motion I made earlier, right?
Mm-hmm. Which you said which failed.
So what would you? Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I want to make sure I'm seconding this correctly. What you're saying, Deb, is that we will leave the budget as presented by the auditor with the COLA and with the merit as is.
As presented, yep.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I want the record to show that I certain didn't intend, I sure didn't think the auditor would, would come to us with misdirection, and I'll call it that. We told the department heads on three to two vote, no raises. And we got presented with a budget that's a mis, misdirection. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hold on.
Buscree?
No.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
No.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Failed three to two.
Okay.
Why did you vote against your motion?
You made the motion.
Because we had to get somewhere.
You can vote against your own motion.
Because you guys wanted a motion to get somewhere, and I kept saying, not voting for merits.
But I said I wanted to wait.
Well, you got your motion.
You suckered me.
I didn't sucker you, I thought we could say it again.
Yes, you did.
You had to make a motion.
Oh.
Recession.
We're going to have a recess, and you can figure it out.
Are we back in session?
Yep.
Can I, I want to make a motion to continue item 21A till the next meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you want to comment? No?
Item 21B is the county site analysis program. The commission signed on to this program back in, I believe it was August of 2014. And I just got notice from the State Department of Ag that it's done. They would like to come out and hit three counties to save money, to present them all in one shot. They want to do us, Meade County, and I think it was Hocken County. And they're asking for a special commission meeting in August. I said I would present that to you guys, if you would go for that or not. Otherwise, we will schedule it during our regular first meeting in September. Again, that one is our provisional, or our required budget hearing is that first Tuesday in September. But it's up to the board. If you want to entertain a special meeting just for this county site analysis presentation, I just need direction for scheduling. What's that?
When do they want it in August?
Um, 23rd, 24th, or 25th. It's the soonest that they could get on Meade Commission's calendar. So they're going to try and hit us and Meade County all together. It would have to be the afternoon of the 23rd or anytime on the 24th or 25th. They need an hour of the board's time for this presentation.
Could we do the 23rd?
We could in the afternoon, if the board wanted to schedule a special meeting that afternoon.
Is that on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I mean.
It's an off, off Tuesday for us.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure they would much appreciate that if the board would be willing to do that.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to have a special meeting for the purpose of looking at the county site analysis presentation from South Dakota Department of Agriculture on Tuesday, August 23rd at 1:00. Is there?
Did you second the motion?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is item 22. I don't have anything at this point. Does anyone else have something?
I might make an observation that, and I understand it's the holiday, but oil field work usually 24/7. And for the day, came back from Bell Field, which is just south of Watford City, which is really the hotspot of the Bakken Field. And two and a half, three hours from Bell Field down to Belle Fouch, not a single truck on the road. That's scary. Not a single truck, either past or, or other direction. I don't know what's in store, but that's scary.
Anyone else? Okay, committee reports.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Anyone? Item 24. Approval of the vouchers.
Move to approve the vouchers?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Items from the public.
The rally camp.
Dan Richard again. I, I do want to bring something up. The HR guy said he didn't care about anything but Pennington County, but every time a study's done about wages, and it was brought up several times during the last couple of years about the other counties in the surrounding area and what their employees were getting paid. Although there was like, they were like making a cozy in dollars every month up there or over there. So that, that statement's definitely inaccurate because I've sat here through that too many times. And it is more than just about Pennington County. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we need executive session?
You sure? Man, so it's more than what we've got in our file?
No.
Packet?
We have one executive session item before you today that's under the personnel. Just the one.
I, I for one don't need an executive session.
Well, does this qualify, what's, what I've got from you, I don't think qualifies.
We're discussing the competence, performance.
If you want to talk about their performance.
If you want to debate whether that person deserves what's on that piece of paper, it absolutely needs to be an executive session. And if you want to make the motion to approve it, I, I'd be more than happy. But if we're going to discuss the competence of an employee, that is covered under executive session.
Well, I see two parts. One, we're talking about restructuring a job, and that's definitely not, in my opinion, executive session material.
No, that was the complimentary information on why we're doing what we're attempting to do. That, that's just background information.
We got to agree to the restructuring first, don't we? You can't get there from there.
An elected official is free to move their FTEs around their offices they see fit. If through that movement, there is a request for an out-of-class pay adjustment, then that needs to be discussed. And that's covered by, we don't discuss elected officials restructuring of their offices. They're free to move their FTEs however they see fit.
Give me put this way, would it make any difference who filled that or what the consequences of the restructuring were? As far as a person, you know, A, B, C, it could be any person, right? So what makes a difference?
I think I'm understanding what you're saying. I'm trying to. The, the restructuring was discussed as a reason why we're attempting to move someone out of class in their pay, as opposed to just putting on a piece of paper.
And no matter who filled that person, that position, it, it's, that's part of the restructuring.
But we cannot pay the wage that is being proposed without an out-of-class pay adjustment, which if you want to discuss why the elected official believes this person deserves, then we'd be talking about their competence and their performance, which is protected under the executive session.
Once again, no matter whether Jack or Jill fills that position, it makes, it's irrelevant.
If.
That's part of the hiring process or whatever.
It's not, it's.
Well, you're missing my point. I don't see executive session.
You don't?
Nope.
Anybody else need it? Or I'll make a motion. Make a motion to.
I can read it for you, Commissioner.
Yeah, will you do that? Out of class adjustment?
The, the, sorry, the motion that I'm looking for today would be to grant an out-of-class pay adjustment for employee Lori Luthy to step 18, to grade 18, step seven.
And that's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
The reason I'm saying that, just for, for everyone's edification, is, is saving the county some money.
It is.
I mean, it didn't sound like it maybe, but the way, the way it's structured, it's going to save us some money.
And this is not a position created for a person. This is a guru, so to speak. This person's going to replace two people.
Yep.
So we're not going to get an FTE request in five and a half months?
Absolutely not. And I believe if you've worked with, if you've worked with Treasurer Saylor, you know that she's as fiscally conservative as they come.
She is.
Well, I don't know about that.
Well, as we have in Pennington County, how's that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Nick? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.